I apologize we're starting one minute late. I'm going to ask us to all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with our Golden Apple Awards. Dr. Bernia.
Thank you very much, Madam President, Members of the Board. Tonight we are going to open with Kirsten Woodby. Kirsten, are you here? Right on up next to Mrs. Kohansky right there, that's the spot, right there. Tonight's first Golden Apple recipient is Kirsten Woodby, District Parent Volunteer. Kirsten was nominated by Nichella Zarek, first grade teacher at Keith Elementary, because Kirsten is the utmost professional when it comes to volunteering. She tackles every job with a smile on her face and a positive attitude. She is wholly committed to doing everything she possibly can to be of assistance to our schools and the district as a whole. In Kirsten's nomination letter, Nichella shared Kirsten is the definition of self-motivated. When working on a project, she spends countless hours at school and does not stop until her task is completed. She often takes materials home to work on them in the evenings and on weekends. Her hard work ethic and positivity are inspiring. Kirsten puts a great deal of thought into her work when organizing the Keith Literacy Library. She spoke with several staff members about what they liked and what they did not like about the current setup of the library. Her thoughtful approach to tackling projects makes them well-planned. Kirsten takes ideas from others and then processes that information to figure out the best way to move forward with a project. Kirsten is a problem solver and an exceptionally hard worker. She creates positive relationships and is always cheerful and friendly with everyone she comes into contact with. She puts 100% into everything she does. Dr. Marcy Augustin, Principal at Keith Elementary, celebrated Kirsten's nomination, sharing Kirsten is amazing. She has given so much time, effort, and energy to our teachers and our school that she simply must be recognized for her efforts. Although, she is humbled by nature and would never seek recognition. She is an outstanding parent volunteer and we are beyond thankful for her support and contributions to making our school community a wonderful place for teachers and students. Kirsten, thank you for your dedication to our schools and making sure that our students, staff, and families have everything they need to be successful. It's our honor to recognize you this evening. Please let the Minister reflect, that's the second standing ovation at a board meeting this year. Our second recipient this evening is Kimberly Drouillard, SCI Para-educator at Sarah Banks Middle School. Kimberly, come on up. Kimberly was nominated by Julianne Young, School Social Worker at Banks, because Kimberly goes above and beyond on a daily basis for students and staff members at Banks. When there is a need, Kimberly is there to fill it without thinking twice. Kimberly works with students who often have difficulty regulating their emotions, managing their behaviors, and finding success in the classroom. She has a level of patience and compassion for students that is second to none. Her ability to connect and develop meaningful and supportive relationships with students and parents is evident daily. In Kimberly's nomination letter, Julianne shared Kimberly is a very dependable staff member. Over the course of 20 years, she consistently comes to school with a smile, a sense of humor, and her compassionate heart to help the students who need the most support at Sarah Banks Middle School. Kimberly is an avid reader and loves learning. She humbly seeks out assistance to best serve the students she supports. She is a reflective person who is willing to try out new strategies, think outside the box, be flexible, and help her students laugh when they need it most. Kimberly is always giving her best self to others, and I admire the selfishness she provides to students and staff. She makes the Banks community a sense of belonging for all students. Michelle Calhorne, Principal at Sarah Banks Middle School, supported Kimberly's nomination, sharing Kimberly has a level of patience and compassion for students that is above and beyond. Her ability to connect and develop meaningful and supportive relationships with students and parents is evident daily. She has had a massive impact on the lives of so many students in her years as a para-educator, and we are so incredibly lucky and thankful to have her as a part of our team at Banks. Kimberly, thank you for impacting the lives of so many students in your years of service to the Banks community. It's our honor to recognize you this evening.
Congratulations, thank you for all you do.
All right, next we have Fall and Winter Sports Recognition. Dr. Bernia.
I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Lons.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to our District Athletic Director, Mr. Brian Swineheart.
Well, thank you, this is, it's a pleasure and honor to be the Athletic Director here in Wald Lake. It's my 13th year here in Wald Lake, 25th as an Athletic Director. I still get a little the pre-game jitters, butterflies coming up here to speak, but it's definitely an honor. This is the district I chose to have my kids raised in. I believe in this district and I love this district, what it's about. So I do want to thank, first of all, the Board for giving us the opportunity to take a few minutes to recognize our athletes that we have here, our administrative team as well, which includes Cabinet, along with, just special thank you to Bill Chaffield in Operations, who does a lot of work to help support our athletic programs that are there, and then our building Athletic Administration that are out there working. Also the parents, as we know, this doesn't happen by accident with the success that kids have, as parents, we're taking our kids to practices and games and, and early on with who's got the snacks and what's happening and carpools and all that. So a huge thank you to our parents for their commitment to their students, to their children. Our coaches, it's really important to take the time to recognize our coaches, who spend more time during the season with their student athletes than they do their own families. They give up that time to be with our children, with your children, to be able to make them better people. Then finally, our athletes who we're going to recognize tonight, they are the ones that put in the work, the time, everything, we want to acknowledge them and their accomplishments that they have. But before I begin, I do want to point out three things this year that I'm really, really proud that our Athletic Department is able to start. We started three new sports. One was archery at the middle school. There was a huge number of At Smart in our archery program. I love this because there were kids that normally weren't on a team, that were a part of the Smart Archery Team and got to represent their school. I think that's really important. Boys volleyball, the fastest-growing sport in our state, we started boys volleyball this year, and it was so fun to go out and watch kids that were a part to compete within our district and to have that success that they have, and it may be the next sport the MHSA has. And then finally, probably what I'm most proud of this year has been our Unified Sports. And for those, I don't know if you're aware, it's where our general and our specialty needs students are paired together to play basketball games. We were able to do this at our showcase nights where the Wald Lake Schools played each other. And I was just talking about this back there, yeah, I cried during it, it was that emotional and that rewarding. It was just an incredible event. So I just wanted to point that out, how proud we are. But getting back to the individuals we're going to honor for the success, whether it was in the court, the pool, the track, or any other place. So tonight, as you look at these awards that you're going to see here, you'll see All-State, you'll see state champions, and you'll see a national champion as well in our athletic community. And I don't know if you've heard, there's an old saying that, that talks about participation in extracurricular, and that does mean the arts, along with if it's performing arts or any of the other extracurricular activities, leads to future success in life. And I say that's not entirely true. What's important with that is that successful participation in extracurricular activities leads to future success. With the right culture, the right coach, the right director, whoever in that role, teaching those lessons and doing it, our athletes, our students that are in those will learn teamwork, they'll learn self-worth and pride, responsibility, hard work, commitment, dedication, and more. But what's most important is that athletics and extracurriculars are truly an extension of the classroom. They really do impact the classroom, because research shows the number-one aspect of success for students is motivation. Those extracurricular activities help students connect and helps keep them motivated in the classroom. And I just, I can't say enough, and it's, and the championships are great and all those things, that's not a cliche, that what we do in the athletic fields, in the, in the band, in the, in the, on the stage, in the theaters, those things do have a direct impact on the success of our students that we have in there. So I think it's really, really important to remind ourselves of those things as you're watching what's going on here, that these are our future leaders, these are the ones that are going to be leading our country, leading corporations, leading businesses, those types of things are really important. Because at the end of the day, 1% of high school athletes, 1% go on to college and actually get a scholarship. A far less number actually make money on our sports. It's rare, very, very rare. We have, you know, whether it's Connor Hubblebuck, who was an All, who was an All-Star goalie in the NHL, or if it was Cam View, who got a chance to pitch for the Pirates last year out there from, from Western, or Adé, and I'm sorry, Adé, I'm not even going to try to pronounce your last name, who was from Central that plays for, in the NFL right now, and was a captain at Notre Dame. Those are the athletes, those are the people that are in our district that we are recognizing and are proud of. Because that's what's important, because before, before we leave the field, the court, the pool, wherever we are, the scoreboard's turned off, and what's left are the memories and the relationships and those things that we have that are, that are left to build us for later life. So as it's continuing to scroll, I do want to, I just think it's really, really important to thank you, the Board, for allowing us to continue to do what we do, to fund the athletics, to do those things, and our administrations, our coaches, and our parents that provide the support, so that our athletes are able to compete and be successful and have what they, have the success that they have. And then the students that are out there and aren't watching or a part of it or what's going on, I hope in some way, shape, or form, you join the club, join, get involved in the theater, art, and athletic team, we have lots of non-cut sports that are out there, get involved, be a part of it, make that connection back with their schools. I think that's really, really important. So again, congratulations to our athletes, we're really proud of your accomplishments, we're really proud of the community that helped them with their success. So thank you very much to everybody.
Foundation for Excellence Awards, Dr. Bernia.
Yes, at this time, I am thrilled to introduce someone who works so hard on behalf of our district and is seemingly everywhere these days. You cannot go many places in Wald Lake and not see Jackie Gerwin, who I'm sure wants to tell you about a golf outing that's coming up. So, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bernia. So, as many of you know, the Foundation for Excellence is all about giving back to classrooms across our district. We recently gave back over $61,000 to support additional tools and projects within classrooms. While I'm the one who handles the day-to-day operations of the Foundation, I certainly don't do this alone. Our Board is made up of staff members, parents, and local business folks in the area. And I'd love to invite my Board up here to help me present this evening's award. So I know there's actually maybe more of you than usually show up to my meetings, so please come on up to the front. So, Marcia Beatty, Suzie Crafton, Marcy Augustin, Matt Hewitt, Brian Feldpoch, Mark Siegler. Did I miss anybody? All right. So, our first award is for outstanding support and generosity and goes to Barb Garbutt. Barb is a former teacher within our district who spent 30 years making memories with students of all ages. What began as a job teaching Phys Ed at Dublin Elementary became something much more as Barb took on the role of Director of the Outdoor Education Center for over 17 years. Last year, the Foundation earmarked funds to help support the construction of a new pavilion at the outdoor center in honor of our 30th anniversary. But when it was determined that additional funds would be needed, Barb stepped right up and made a generous donation to help make this a reality. We are working with Kerry Martin to finalize funds and to hopefully break ground on this soon. Thank you, Barb, for always stepping up and making sure our students have a phenomenal experience in Wald Lake Schools. So, our second Outstanding Support and Generosity Award goes to Phyllis Wagner. While Phyllis can't be in attendance tonight, as she no longer lives locally, she's continued to make a difference through a generous donation to the Foundation in honor of her late husband, Robert. I've spoken with Phyllis a few times, and I always enjoy taking a walk down memory lane with her. She met Robert by chance when she was teaching at Dublin Elementary, and Robert was temporarily assigned to that building while waiting for a position as a head custodian at Wald Lake Western. They fell in love and built a life together while they both continued to work within the district. Phyllis said that they were unfortunately unable to have children, so the district became their family, their students became their kids. Robert passed away back in 2017, and when Phyllis speaks of him, you can hear the love and admiration in her voice. Her choice to honor Robert with a donation to the Foundation helps support many additional classroom grants this year and will continue their legacy of treating the students of Wald Lake as their family. A huge thank you to Phyllis Wagner for her generous donation. See, this is why I have Board members. Okay, not just that. Our third Outstanding Support and Generosity Award goes to DFCU Financial. So, we have Jamie Lieberman here today to accept this award, so come on up. DFCU has been supporting the Foundation for nearly 10 years, and they have become a great partner to the Foundation in that time. One of the things that struck me about DFCU is how different, how many different educational foundations they support. Detroit, Birmingham, Novi, Taylor, Lansing, Wald Lake. The extent to which they support all these organizations is a testament to their belief that strong education is essential in a community. Beyond the generous donations to the Foundation this past year, DFCU has also helped give me ideas of future fundraisers that they work with the other foundations on. Sometimes support comes in dollars and sometimes it comes in ideas. DFCU has helped provide both of these to the Foundation for Excellence. Thank you to all of the staff at DFCU for being a great partner to us for the last 10 years. All right. Our final Outstanding Support and Generosity Award goes to Wald Lake Schools Federal Credit Union. So Brian, come on over. Just take a few steps over. Supporting Wald Lake Schools is not only in their name, it's in their souls. If there's an event supporting our community, you will likely see Brian and likely Connie there as well. They volunteered at the FFE Golf Scramble, helped sell tuition expedition tickets, are huge supporters of the Warriors for Warriors Pinkout Program. They've helped the FFE with substantial financial donations and surprise staff around the district with flowers during Staff Appreciation Week, pies during Pie Day. They're always doing what they can to put smiles on faces of our staff and students. I can say without a doubt that our partnership with Wald Lake Schools Federal Credit Union is one of our strongest, and our community is lucky for having them around. Thank you so much, Brian. All right. Let me take it out. All right. Our final award tonight is an extra-special one that's made in honor of Michael Bernhardt, a former Foundation for Excellence trustee who passed away in 2015. While I was never able to meet Michael, I can tell that he made a huge impact among the trustees on the FFE Board. They described him as a steadfast supporter who was never focused on bringing, being acknowledged for his hard work and did what he did because it was important to him. This year's Michael Bernhardt Legacy Award goes to Cameron Beebe. Cameron is a rock star student who works hard every day without worrying about if other people notice. When I took this job, Michelle Bianco told me what a wonderful young lady Cameron was, and I don't think her praise even gave Cameron half the justice she deserves. She's an outstanding athlete, a National Honor Society student, and a fantastic supporter of the Foundation for Excellence. In this past year, Cameron has volunteered at our Golf Scramble, helped sell tuition expedition raffle tickets, and worked hard to engage other Wald Lake Northern students with the FFE. Getting students to understand the importance of the Foundation is not an easy task, but Cameron has made sure to share our accomplishments with her peers, and we noticed that more students are understanding what we do. So thank you for that, Cameron. I do want to take a second and read a quick note from Don Bernhardt, who is Michael's brother, he was unable to make it tonight, but he wanted to share a couple words with you. Dear Cameron, congratulations on receiving this year's Michael Bernhardt Award, presented by the Foundation for Excellence. I'm very sorry that I'm not able to attend this year, so I'd like to drop you a quick note. Jackie told me about you and your activities, and from that, I definitely understand why you are the recipient of this year's award. I thank you for spreading the word about the great things the Foundation does and provides to the students in the Wald Lake School District. The Foundation for Excellence meant a great deal to Michael, and to see the success of the Foundation continue is outstanding. Good luck to you and successes in all your future endeavors. So thank you so much, Cameron, we will miss you, but we hope you have a wonderful time at the University of Michigan, and go Blue. Thank you so much.
And next we have the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association, MSBOA, All-State, and Spring Honors. Dr. Bernia.
We're going to go back to Dr. Lons for this.
And I'll do what I do best and turn it over to our District Secondary Instrumental Music Department Head, Mrs. Kristin Dzinski.
Thank you so much. My name is Kristin Dzinski, I'm the Band Director at Sarah Banks Middle School and also the Instrumental Music Department Chair, and I'm being joined tonight by several of my colleagues. If you wouldn't mind coming up here right now, I can give you the certificates so you have them ready to hand out to your students, that would be great. We have Teresa Sierra Hall, the orchestra teacher, also from Sarah Banks, Mike York, the Band Director from Geisler, we have Heidi Tagas, Orchestra at Central and Northern, Mary Hulleberger, the Band Director from Northern, Pat Dzinski, the Band Director at Western, and Dave Rogers, the Band Director at Central. Tonight, we are pleased to recognize the instrumental music students selected to participate in the 2023 Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association All-State Bands and Orchestras and Spring Honors Ensembles. Our Wald Lake students competed against thousands of young musicians from across Michigan to gain acceptance into these prestigious ensembles. The students selected for the All-State Program performed extremely difficult etudes, memorized scales, and sight-read for their audition. Only the top performers were accepted into the All-State Ensembles, and I am proud to announce that seven of our Wald Lake instrumental music students were included in these groups. The All-State Bands and Orchestras performed at the Michigan Music Conference in January. The students accepted for the Spring Honors Ensembles must go through a rigorous process to prove themselves as the top high school musicians in the state. They must qualify for MSBOA High School State Solo and Ensemble Festival, where they perform a proficiency examination, which includes a demanding solo, memorized scales, and sight-reading. Only the top-scoring students in the state are invited to participate in the Spring Honors Bands and Orchestras, and five of those students were from Wald Lake. We are also pleased to recognize two students for their acceptance into the honors performances at Carnegie Hall. Nearly 10,000 students from around the world auditioned for this opportunity. Students from 48 states, Bermuda, Canada, China, and South Korea joined for a performance on the world-famous Carnegie Hall Stage, a venue that marks the pinnacle of musical achievement. Acceptance into this elite group is a direct result of the talent, dedication, achievements demonstrated in the application and audition. Achieving success at this level is no easy feat and is a testament to the hard work and dedication of these talented musicians. The instrumental music teachers are proud of these outstanding students and are pleased to have the pleasure to work with them through their participation in band and orchestra. At this time, we will recognize each student, calling them up by name. The band and orchestra teachers will present each student with a certificate. Students, please remain standing at the side of the room over here by your teacher until everyone has received their certificate, and then we will take a group photo with Dr. Bernia and Mrs. Casagrande. From Banks Middle School, we have Jonathan Song, violin, and he was in the All-State Middle School Orchestra. Okay, how about, we can move to the front when you have your students, let's move to the front and get set up for the picture. Thank you, Dr. Lons. From Geisler Middle School, we have Eden Choi, clarinet, and Saya Farrell, oboe, and they were both in the All-State Middle School Band. From Central, we have Ella Fried, on trumpet, who is in the All-State High School Band, Sarasa Iria, alto saxophone, in the spring. Sarasa Iria, alto saxophone, in the Spring Honors Band. And Catherine Rogers, clarinet, who is also in the Spring Honors Band. From Northern, Ione Nchastegui, bassoon, Allstate High School Band. Kendall Lang, string bass, Spring Honors Orchestra. Andrew Pierce, euphonium, who is in the Allstate High School Band, the Spring Honors Band, and the honors band performance at Carnegie Hall. And Casey Thai, violin, in the Allstate High School Orchestra. From Western, we have Luca Curtell, a percussionist, in the Spring Honors Orchestra. And Jorge Palacios Rodriguez on string bass, in the honors orchestra performance at Carnegie Hall. Congratulations again to our Allstate and Honors students, and thank you again to the school board members for allowing us to have this recognition tonight. Can the parents come up, please?
We are going to take a brief intermission. If you want to stay, you are more than welcome. We're going to get set up for our curriculum and instruction report, but we will start back at about 7:35. We'll give us five minutes. Thank you.
At the end of the year, summatively, we take a look at this data. We're legislated to take a look at this data and to provide information to parents about that. After every diagnostic window, parents do receive a very detailed report of their students' performance and how they're doing in mastering those grade level standards. Our teachers have professional development that aligns with this assessment. So, we don't just use the assessment and give it and check a box and say we're done. It's a very active assessment that we use. We use it in terms of planning for instruction. We use it to take a look at how our planning around our systems and alignment comes together. And really, as I had mentioned a couple of years ago to you, this is really an integral part of a system that we're creating here in Wald Lake, and I'm excited to share our end-of-year data with you. So, as Dr. Bernia stated, this is an overview of it. We're just going to get started with reminding the board and members of the community about our goals and our priorities. So, several goals that our Learning Services team and I have been working on really diligently is the integration of our multi-tiered system of supports and our MYKIP, which is our Michigan Continuous Improvement Plan. That's our district improvement plan. All school districts have to have goals and improvement plans. And the integration of that with the way that we support students in reaching those grade level standards is really, IREDDI is at the heart of that. This year, our goals were rebooting that focus on our multi-tiered system of support that my team and I designed over the last few years. We'll talk about that kind of in a summary at the end. But we implemented that at the elementary level starting last year. So, this year, we did a little reboot on that, and we were really intentional about the role that IREDDI plays in looking at student performance and making sure that no student is falling through the cracks. Elementary, we focused our goal around small group instruction, I should say, our strategy to meet the goal of reading informational text. That elementary-level small group instruction was the core of a lot of our professional development this year. It's a very high-leverage strategy. It allows teachers to really tailor to smaller groups of students and very specific needs. When I shared the fall data with you, I talked about how teachers can run those grouping reports, right? They can take a look at how their class did and say, "I want to break these students down into these students need work in this phonics skill," or "These students need work in geometry or algebraic thinking." And they can pull those students with them into some very small-group intentional instruction. And that's what we focused our professional learning on this year with our teachers, was how to implement small group instruction in reading and math. In the middle school level, we've used IREDDI in our essentials classes that really help to identify students that need support. We've also used those in our core classes as well. And really, keeping that relevancy of IREDDI at the middle school level has been a challenge, given that, I don't know if you have a 12, 13, or 14-year-old at home, but sometimes it's hard to keep that engagement when they've been taking a similar assessment for a long time. We worked, the team and I, worked with IREDDI themselves and talked about how they could make that middle school assessment interface more engaging for that age group. And they listened to us. They took a lot of those cartoons out. They've really looked at how they could modify the assessment to be more appealing. So, we're glad that they've taken our feedback and listened to that as well. And at the secondary level, disciplinary literacy is a strategy that focuses very specifically on reading of informational text across content, not just in English classes. So, we've partnered with Oakland Schools with some of that work. Some of the consultants there are working at the state level, and Disciplinary Literacy Network, into which we've been involved in some of that professional learning and some of that work to help our teachers. So, those are our goals and priorities this year. And just to take you back, this is just a really quick refresher for the board and for members of the community on how we look at these relative placement levels. So, the overall data I'm going to be showing you is placement. There's two ways to look at student performance. There's placement, how did you do in mastering standards? And then there's growth, how are you growing from where you've been? And so, the growth data is still that data that's kind of, you know, we're still piecing that together. I know Dr. Bernia mentioned at the beginning, some of those subgroups. I'll talk a little bit about what that growth data is showing us, but the actual data I will be sending you very soon. But as we look at these placement levels, we want to take a look at how our students have grown from their performance in the fall on grade level standards to their performance in the spring. And it's broken down by grade level for you. So, I want you to pay close attention to the way the bar graph looks, especially in the green areas. What was the green area looking like in the fall? What does that green area look like in the spring? And how do the yellow and red areas look like those are reducing? So, that's really an overall kind of glance as to looking at student placement when it comes to standards. The first set of data that we'll look at is our math data. So, I'm going to advance over to the next screen. And this is that comparison. The first bar graph shows you the fall scores. The second bar graph shows you the spring scores. And we just finished these assessments last Friday. Dr. Bernia mentioned we did a really quick turnaround. We really only had two days, Tuesday and Wednesday, to get this data put together and pulled and ready to present. So, a couple of things to note, just a tremendous amount of growth, especially when you look at kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Obviously, we always want to turn that attention to our youngest learners and how they're doing in mastering standards. And it really is just, this data is really speaking to some really positive things that are taking place. I want you to note some really significant increases in the percentage of students that are mastering standards. In kindergarten, we saw 54% more students mastering standards than we did in the fall. That's a tremendous growth. The same thing with first grade, we've got 55% of students more mastering standards now than they were at the beginning of the year. In second grade, 42%. These increases are fantastic, and they're increases that we haven't seen since prior to COVID. So, these are really just some phenomenal gains that our students are making in K5. Six, seven, and eight, we also see gains. One of the things that we're looking at is perhaps why the significance of the gains in elementary might not quite match those gains that we're seeing in six, seven, and eight. So, we're going to be digging deeper into that and looking at that. I know when we talk a little bit about our data profile, our middle school students, our, just our watch area, those are things that we want to be looking at in terms of, we talked a lot about revitalizing that culture around the assessment, working with teachers to have really intentional chats about student data, because we really tend to wonder a little bit, is there some middle school apathy that's involved when it comes to performing on some of these assessments and doing their best? Because we do look at this, right? And it's really important work. One of the things I would like to note is the math growth. This is not in this chart. I'm just going to verbally share this with you, but you'll see it in some of that subgroup data that I share with you. Growth is measured in how well students master a year's worth of standards in a year's worth of time. If students are meeting 100% typical growth targets, that means that 100%, they're making 100% of the growth we would expect them to make. In math, however, our growth is 106%. So, that means our students are actually growing beyond a year's worth of gains in a year's worth of time. They're actually growing past that. So, that means we're covering ground for students that might be falling into some of those lower categories. And you'll see that growth data when I'm able to extract that and get you some really good graphs to look at. But that's the great news. In some of those red and yellow areas, we're seeing students growing 135%, 140%. Yes, they may not be moving to that next placement level, but their growth is beyond that year's worth of growth in a year's worth of time. So, like I said, that really detailed data will be coming to you as we're able to get that pulled. But it's remarkable. Next, we're going to take a look at reading. And reading's even more startling in the growth in K5. Again, taking a look at some of those significant increases in percentages of students mastering grade level standards. In kindergarten, for instance, we've got a 58% increase in students mastering standards, not 58% of them, a 58% increase in students mastering standards at kindergarten, and a 52% increase in students mastering those standards in first grade. So, really, almost nonexistent red areas when we take a look across lower L. Upper L, again, that's something that we want to take a look at, looking at the fidelity of implementation of our curriculum, focusing on small group instruction and some of those high-leverage strategies, which are kind of newer for upper L. And we know that that's a newer teaching philosophy in upper L. So, we want to continue to focus on that, because our lower L seems to really have embraced that. As Dr. Bernia and the cabinet and I travel out and take a look and do our instructional visits at buildings, we note that that small group instruction is sort of alive and well and a little more robust when we walk through lower L classrooms. We want to see that same instructional model being implemented comprehensively at the upper L as well. But still, fantastic growth. And then again, when we take a look across middle school, yes, growth, not as pronounced as we see at the elementary level. We've got some curricular things that we would like to take a look at. Again, looking at increasing the use of data with our students at the middle school level and really involving them in taking a look at where their performance is. And again, the growth in literacy and reading overall, I talked about that growth in math, right? 100% would be our great target, like 100% of the kids are making that year's worth of growth. We have, in reading, 125% growth. So, they're exceeded, they're going a quarter past what we would expect them to learn in a year, overall, in our K8 data. And some of those subgroups are achieving tremendous growth. We even, I'll break it down when I give you that data in forthcoming, but even in like our top tiers, because we wonder, like, how are those top tiers growing? Are we ignoring the kids that are already in green and only focusing on students that might be behind? The growth that we're seeing in grade levels in the green is 130, 140, 150% growth. So, you'll take a look and see that those growth targets are really just off the charts. One of the things that we noted when we met with IREDDI this, yesterday? Yesterday, when they shared these data, this data with us, is IREDDI said, "This doesn't happen." So, that's really a real testament to some really hard work on the part of our teams. You know, I know I mentioned a few years back that putting systems in place and aligning things takes time, right? It takes time not only to put those things together, but it really takes time to realize what that growth can look like. And I think we're really in that mode right now, where we're starting to see that alignment, that systems work, that myself, my team, and then staff across the district have really worked hard on things like the multi-tiered system of support process that we have in place for students. The goals around MYKIP that are really drilled down and related to reading informational text, like really getting down to the heart of what seems to be holding students back, leveraging some really high-impact strategies and helping our teachers see how to implement those on a daily basis in the classroom. The alignment of our curriculum K5 is really evident in that K5 progress. We want to see that progress in middle school, so taking a look at how we can help support curriculum there. And then making sure that the professional development calendar is aligned to all of this work. So, it's very systemic, it's very integrated, and I'm pleased to report that we're really seeing tremendous gains from our students across the district. Like I said, even those students up in the green, growing well beyond 100, 120, 130% growth, and even students in those red areas, making tremendous gains. So, I will be sharing subgroup data with you, as Dr. Bernia mentioned. We're still working on making sure we can put that into the right graphs and explain that in the ways that we want to. But I'm just, I'm really pleased to be able to share this data with you. So, I always end these data presentations with talking about what those next steps look like. When meeting with our IREDDI team and talking with our Learning Services team, these are some top leader actions that IREDDI identifies that help us to continue that growth trajectory. We've worked really hard on things like building the community and the culture around IREDDI. We've worked really hard this year with helping teachers understand how to create structures and schedules that support not only the diagnostic, but using that data then and working that into, how do you work small groups into your structure and your schedule during the day? And then that promoting professional growth is always part of our PD plan. But next year, we're going to continue to focus on the third and the fourth item up there, the using assessment and data, and then supporting teaching and learning. And those are two really high-top leader actions that not only myself and my team will be helping our principals with, but principals helping instructional specialists with, to help coach our teaching staff with. We're all in this as one big system and one big team. And like I said, it's taken a few years to make sure that we have these things in place, but they're really, really showing just an incredible amount of growth. And I'm really proud of our team, our staff, and our students. So, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions, comments? I just have one question. So, all seems obviously very high-level, very positive. Anything keeping you up at night or anything that, just from a high level, that you're worried about as you saw it come in? And I know it's early, you just got it, but...
Yeah, I think it is just really to continue to help support our teachers. To me, that's that thing that keeps me up at night, like, how can we, you know, make sure that we're reaching everyone, that we're giving them and getting feedback from our teachers on what they need? We have a really continuous improvement cycle of every time we'll run a professional learning session, we ask for teacher survey feedback. You know, what did you think of this? What, you know, what could we do differently? One of the things we heard loud and clear from teachers this year is, "A one-size-fits-all PD doesn't work for me." You know, "I'm three steps ahead of maybe a teacher down the hallway. I need something a little different." And so, two of our PDs this year focused on like a mini education conference, where we had breakout sessions, where teachers could self-select what they wanted to go to. For some, they may say, "You know, I need a really basic overview of how to pull IREDDI reports and look at data." For others, they're like, "You know, I'm ready to get into some real standards mastery with these kids, and I want to kick this up a notch. I want to do data chats with them. I want them to chart their own progress. Or, I'd really like to learn more about small group instruction." So, we've really heard from them. We've, it's been, those are those huge lifts. So, for me, that keeping me up at night, the growth is speaking for itself, so I'm pleased with that. But that continuation of, how do we continue to support our fantastic teachers in helping them get better at the excellent job they do? And it's that trajectory from good to great, from great to excellent, so.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
And next, we have the facility utilization study and presentation. Dr. Bernia.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chatfield for this one.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Over the past several months, representatives from Plant Moran Cressa have conducted community demographic and enrollment studies throughout the district, analyzed the instructional, facility, and operational cost data for each facility, and held public feedback forums for the purpose of preparing an assessment of the efficiencies and utilization of our facilities, similar to what they did, assessments they did for us in 2011 and 2018. Paul Wills from Plant Moran Cressa is here tonight to present the results of that study.
Thank you, Mr. Chatfield, and good evening, board members, Dr. Bernia. Again, just a real quick overview of the presentation tonight. We're going to be brief, be interested, and then be seated. I think that's the best way to present a lot of great data at these points. Hit a little bit about the 2011, 2000 updates, to enrollment projections, and utilization. And then also, what are some of those things that we're seeing, not just here in Wald Lake, but across the county, across the state, and obviously, future considerations for the district going forward? Not going to spend a lot of time who Plant Moran Cressa is. You might have heard of Plant Moran from the tax and audit standpoint. Plant Moran Cressa is with the Capital Projects Group, working with a lot of large organizations, a lot of school districts from Detroit, Utica, Wald Lake. I think we work with about 35 of the top 50 largest districts here in the state. But some of this demographic information is used by some of our hospital clients, Beaumont, DMC, Olympia Development of Michigan, Wayne State University, and various counties. So, one of the things we're going to show you tonight is we drew a polygon of Wald Lake schools, and we're going to give you a lot of that information of what to look for in terms of number of households, number of households with children. What's the average age of those householders? What is the median cost of those houses going forward? And really, just tie it into the enrollment trends that we see going forward. So, again, back to 2011, there's a couple of things that really started that conversation. I'll defer to Ms. Les, but I believe the state took $470 per student away, per person across the state. This is right after the 2008, 2009, 2010 Great Recession. Also, I believe some additional funding, I believe it was 20J, was also reconsidered. So, there was a significant strain on the financials, which really is the impetus of this and working with Dr. Gutman and Dr. Delgado in a 54-person team. So, tonight is actually a continuation of that 10 years of work, and it is best practice. I appreciate Dr. Bernia, the board, the opportunity in the trust here with Plant Moran Cressa to re-update this. So, at the end of the day, the end result was about a reduction of 175,000 square feet of operational space out of the 2011 study. We're going to talk about what does it cost to operate your schools currently going forward. To 2018, again, some of that was really taking a look at that bubble of the elementary that we saw in 2011, 12, working its way through the system into the middle schools, and ultimately, why we're here tonight is throughout the entire K-12 programs. But again, that was really more just identifying and optimizing the efficiencies of those facilities. As part of the BON program, it is obviously, you're looking at renovating interior spaces, additions, things that, and they ensure that really came out of the utilization kind of going forward. So, what are we here tonight for? As I mentioned, we do this for about 70 districts across the state. We take a look at these three geographic charts. I know it's a little hard to see on the TV screens, but these are the three maps. We have the elementary cohort maps, the middle school, and ultimately, the high school. We compare that to what's happening here in the county, what's happening in the state of Michigan. And a special thanks to Ms. Les, Mr. Chatfield, and a lot of the accounting pupil offices for a lot of this data points as we go forward. So, the first sheet on the right-hand side, again, it's a part of a 54-page demographic report. But again, what we're finding out is there's 102,900 people in that boundary. You overlap multiple municipalities, but the Wald Lake School District is comprised of roughly 46,925 units. That equates to roughly 90% occupied, and the median age is 52.8 years of age. So, again, not a lot of zero-to-fives coming out of that cohort, like you'd see at a South Lyon, a Brighton, some of those school districts that are actually growing in terms of population. We break it down even further to the number of families, how many households actually have children, so 46% of household units actually have children. We often get chants like, "Well, if we build 100 houses, how many houses would you typically expect?" Again, the median household value, about 225, about .46 kid per unit. We'll talk a little bit about why that's important here going forward. School-aged children in that boundary, again, this is PK through 12, there's just under 16,000 students. That number was 19,000 students back in 2011. 86% choose the public schools, which is Wald Lake. It could also include schools of choice and/or charter. And about 13% choose private. As a county, you're actually just below that county average of about 14%. And that really has not changed over the last five years from that going forward. We talk about public pre-K and private. So, again, that's some of that opportunity of having a pre-K program. You heard Governor Whitmer mention a pre-K for four-year-olds. How does that overall come into play with planning going forward? So, this is the demographics as of today. What are some of those trends? So, the total population will remain relatively steady. The state of Michigan's always hovered right around 9.9, 10 million people. From 2000, there's over 2 million K-12 students, now about 1.4, 1.5, so half a million less kids. I think you heard today, the governor mentioned a study, a coalition of how to actually increase the population here in the state of Michigan. So, the trend data we're looking at is about a 6.4% decrease of zero-to-five-year-olds, about a 4.6 for that six-to-11 cohorts, a 5% 12 to 17, and then about 5.9 at the 18 to 24-year-old. The median age of a household will go up, so we're not seeing that reversal of age of that median household going forward. Taking the same amount of data, so we went back to 2010, when we first started working with the district, snapshot in time here, we are in 2021, 22. And as you can see, it's still a continual decrease across all those cohorts. So, people ask, "Mr. Wills, why is that happening?" This here is a chart of the live births in Oakland County. Actually, when we went back to the 2011, we actually went back to 1980. For this one, we went back to 1990. So, there's over 17,000 live births in Oakland County at that particular time. Coincidentally, you had about 17,000 kids at that same time period. When you go to the 2011, 2012, you can see that dip right there in the middle, that middle school cohort is actually working its way through the system right now. And obviously, you can just see the impact coming out of the recession. The birth rate has actually never really increased. It's leveled off about 13,500. During COVID, it actually dropped below 13,000. It's going to rise up to about 13,200. That's kind of the new normal for Oakland County. So, as a county, in the next 10 years, the county's looking at roughly about 40,000 less students between the school districts here going forward. So, how does Plant Moran Cressa do enrollment projections? Again, we take a look at the community demographics. We look at historical enrollment, which is audited by the state. That's how you get your foundation allowance with your fall count and your spring count. We're also looking at those live births that we just calculated going forward. This chart is just a representative of the historical data chart, so this is your reporting form. This is the data that we use. So, again, this does get audited by the state. What it's showing is that, you know, you used to graduate about 1,100 students, you're now graduating about 850, 890 students. That's going to be the new norm going forward. And then we'll talk a little bit about the entrance level at the kindergarten level here shortly. So, we take the same data, that thick black line you see in the left, everything to the left is, again, historical data. What's happening is you're going from live births of 13,600 down to about 12,500. Wald Lake has always captured around 6.5% to 7% of those live births for that particular year. So, as the birth rate declines, again, that percentage will stay the same. You do offer great programs at the kindergarten level. The kids do stay once through the systems. But again, you're going to see graduating classes of under 1,000 here for the next five years going forward. Some people ask the impact of COVID. You actually dropped about 1% of that enrollment for that year, but you actually bounced back up over 7% last year. So, again, we're seeing a lot of strong returns for a lot of districts coming out of COVID. Same information looked a different way. So, again, just kind of the flat line, you can kind of see the impact of COVID here, the decrease of the K5s. Again, that popped back up, but again, the declining birth rate and that bubble kind of working its way through the system. The K8s, or I'm sorry, the 68s, which is your blue squares, again, is starting to level off, but again, you'll see that steady decline here of roughly 2%. And then ultimately, your high school level, again, is that bubble works its way through the next five to 10 years going forward. We're going to switch gears a little bit. So, again, we talk about the enrollment levels. So, again, really going back with the projections going up to 2027, about a 670 decrease over the next 10 years at the elementary level, decline of roughly 686 at the middle school level, and about just 1,000 students at the high school level over the next 10 years. So, what does this mean? Obviously, from a state aid funding allowance, you take that, times it by, you know, decline of 2,400 students, that's going to be some of those challenges that the district will face, balancing education programs, et cetera, going forward. And then ultimately, you're spending operational dollars in underutilized facilities. That was the big impetus in the 2011 study, when the elementary schools were below 80% going forward. So, before I switch up into utilization, any questions on enrollment? It's kind of, everyone's shaking their heads, like you kind of hear the declining birth. This is just very specific to Wald Lake here, so. So, the second part of the engagement was really taking a look at facility costs. So, again, we're looking at staffing per building, utilities, maintenance, and then coming up with a cost per building and a cost per square foot. Again, we're not going to have you read this, but again, looking at all your facilities going forward, you have about 700 acres at the elementary level, about, actually, building size, about 700,000 square feet going forward with the annual utility cost of roughly a dollar a foot, or $756,000. At the middle school level, just under 563,000 square feet, about 3.8 million. And then obviously, the high school, just under a million square feet. Taking the better way to look at it, again, just break it down to some subbullets, same information, different format. Collectively, you spend just under $10 a foot, which is within your peer group, for operational costs. So, this would be staff, personnel, building-specific, and then maintenance costs. So, there's parking lots, there's grass, things of that nature, you spend just over a dollar a foot. At the middle school level, the facility sizes are a little bit larger. However, you get some efficiencies with class sizes, so that price per square foot drops about 645. And then it's still same cost to mow and cut grass and things of that nature, roughly a dollar a foot. And lastly, at the high school level, as I mentioned, three high schools, just under a million square feet. Again, because of class sizes, the cost per square foot actually does drop to about $5.31. However, you do have larger acreage of land and a lot more fields and things of that nature, so that cost for maintenance goes up to about $1.55. So, we're going to switch into the utilization. So, again, when Plant Moran Cressa takes a look at utilization, we're counting general education classrooms. We want to preserve special ed and support classes, so these will not be part of that calculation of capacity. We also want to preserve art, music, computer labs, pre-K, things of those natures. We're also looking at vacant classrooms, and then, of course, the equity among the schools. So, this is just a sample floor plan of how we came up with the calculations. Again, taking a look at the elementary levels, you have 250 gen ed classrooms. You have a student enrollment of just under 5,300. Going back to, you know, 2012, you had about 6,600 kids at that time. So, that decision that the board made at that time was right to look at the decline enrollment here. You do have a capacity of roughly about 6,500 students, which puts you at 81%. at eighty-one percent. The state wants you right around eighty to eighty-five percent is kind of a goal. So from an elementary level, you're, you're right in, in par with that going forward. The next one, if you take a look at, is the middle school level, one hundred and forty-nine general, general education classrooms. You have enrollment of twenty-five, thirty-one. Obviously, these schools were kind of built in response to the seventies, eighties, nineties, and twenties growth. So right now, you have a capacity of about fifty-one percent at the middle school level, and then at the high school level, about forty-five percent or capacity. So when you take a look at historically, the number of square footage you have, you have a total capacity for about nineteen thousand students, which would go back to the mid, early two thousands in terms of total enrollment for the district going forward. So again, not going to go through it again, other than the fact that you're about eighty-one percent at the elementary level, fifty-one percent at the middle school, and then obviously forty-five at the high school levels going forward. So where's some of those next steps? So what are those opportunities? We see a lot of districts taking a look at STEM or STEAM, or some other sort, other sort of collaborative spaces that can, they can regenerate and renovate existing spaces, which actually maybe take some genetic classrooms offline and help increase that utilization and lower the number of classes. What are the priorities of the district? In two thousand and eleven, it was, oh my gosh, we've got a twenty million dollar budget. You're not in the same position, which is great. However, there is some concern of declining enrollment, even with the increase of state aid fund. There's the ESRS, I'll call it sunset in twenty-four, twenty-five. So a lot of the changing in funding will happen here in the next three to five years. Long-term planning. So as you start looking at strategic planning, updating that strategic plan from an academic lens, a facility lens going forward, and then information that I still need, what are the priorities of the district, administration team, the board, and the community? I think the two thousand and eleven process was pretty insightful, where we had literally hundreds of people at various, you know, functions and forms. So tonight is really more of a phase one, it's fact-finding. This is data. We thought, and again, commend Dr. Burney and his team to really bring this to light as, as you start to look at the next three to five years. Again, what are those, some of those considerations? What does pre-K for four look like? How many GSRP classrooms do you have now? What does that change in potential funding and legislation look like? Current cohort alignment. So we see a lot of this discussion of opportunities of, do we want to stay at the K-five, six, eight, nine, twelve? I know that was a big impetus in two thousand and eleven, was kind of get back to that normal, normalcy. Consolidation expansion of current and/or future programs. We see things such as robotics. We see other programs that really are not necessarily core curriculum that could potentially be there. How does that get lined into it? What's the desired target enrollment utilization? So again, districts of your size, they typically have elementary schools of five to six hundred kids. Plymouth Canton, they have an elementary with seven hundred and fifty kids. Again, we have some of that peer data that we'd be able to share with the district. As I mentioned, the Department of Treasury really wants you about eighty-five percent utilization. When they do calculate their utilization, they actually have significantly less number of kids. So as, as you've gone through the bond process for the twenty seventeen bond, nineteen bond, they're looking at twenty, twenty-two kids in a classroom, where we know reality is much higher than that going forward. Reconfiguration, again, taking a look at enrollment trends and operational, and most importantly, just continue this ongoing operational enrollment utilization review. And so again, it's been our pleasure over the last ten years, kind of come back every five years and kind of give you the update. So at that point, I'm going to turn it back over to the board and Dr. Burney for any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I know, I know, whatever we do, we all get the community involved.
We all get the community involved in this as we're moving forward. I know that we all, you know, the rumor mill will start flowing as soon as people walk out of here, and I will say that no decisions have made, have been made. We haven't even, you know, we're just at base one, so the people that will be calling us saying, what, you know, is this school calling or that school calling? Trust me, we are at the same point of this as you are this evening. We don't know, and I just want to make the community aware of that. And I look forward to the information as it flows in, because I think, you know, we will be, again, you know, rightsizing is the key word in this situation. Looking at facilities for possible, possibly being repurposed or redesigned, new programs coming into the district if we have the funding to do it, and new offerings, the early childhood program, possibly opening, opening that up at different buildings or additional buildings in the district. I mean, there's plenty of opportunities there for this.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Peterson?
I know in our, some of our outreach meetings we had, we talked about the pre-K. Did we do, did you have a chance to do any more of a dive into permanent residency in that age level versus homeownership? Were you able to look at that anymore and determine if there was a trend there, if those kids were staying in the district?
Yes, right now, if you take a look, you have about a two to three percent cohort from kindergarten to first grade. So again, looking at your pre-K numbers, that's about relatively the same. The question to get into is, right now, there's about a fifty-fifty split between private and public. So the question is, if there's the funding for the pre-K for four-year-olds, can Wald Lake schools have those programs that are attractive, especially if they're at no cost to those residents? We would expect to see an increase cohort from pre-K into kindergarten. So I am not sure of the exact numbers at this time, because again, the state hasn't really come out with the numbers, the funding sources, et cetera. We could tell you how many four-year-olds there are within those boundaries. We could work with Dr. Burney and his team to get you that, if you're looking for that level of detail, so.
And Dr. Burney, I don't know if there's anything you want to say kind of at a high level. I know that one of the things we've, we've talked about is the potential for creativity in, in next steps, but I don't know if there's anything high level you wanted to share with the public.
I think first and foremost, I've been through this before, and so I've worked in a large district, and, and I think managing the footprint is the right, is the right way to say it. And so there is, there are strategies, and there are things that I have done in my career, including working with Plant Row Cressa before in another district, to, to engage families and to, to really identify the, the high target priorities. And then we go to work on figuring out how to make things more efficient, right? And so, you know, once we can, once we can identify, once we bring people together and identify that and can find ways to make things a little bit more efficient, because there are things that mean a lot to the community, and there are things that don't mean as much to the community. And, and then there are also some program adjustments that we can make. You know, Plant Row was incredibly helpful with us in Warren as we thought about an alternative high school program or STEM programs to make our buildings more efficient, or we moved some district-level functions around to make our buildings more efficient. And so I, I guess what I, what I want the community to hear me say tonight is, as you're walking out of here, seeing that our buildings are about to become less efficient, we're going to go to work and, and we've, I've been through this before, so that we can, we can engage you, understand those priorities, and then do a great job for you. So that's all I have.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Dr. Burney?
All right, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Les.
Thank you, Dr. Burney. All right, thank you. We'll start with some positive financial highlights from this school year, and there were a lot of them. It was a, it was a really positive year from a financial standpoint. A lot of good things happened. Our student enrollment, that is our blended count, and I use that because that's the number that is what determines our funding. And of course, funding is what I care about when I'm looking at our budget. The reason that, that twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-eight students is a positive number is because our original budget included a number of eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-nine, so, or I'm sorry, seven hundred and sixty-nine. So we, this, our final student count was four hundred and nineteen students higher than what we had originally built our budget on. So when talking about our, our facilities and, and the jump or the bounce back of our enrollment, we, we saw that this year with four hundred and nineteen students, more than what we had anticipated. The foundation allowance came out at four hundred and fifty dollars per student. We had originally budgeted three hundred. So when the budgets come out from, from the state, there are typically three different proposals, the Senate, the House, and the governor's budget. And we usually take a blend of, of the three of them or somewhere in between, and that's what we had done last year with three hundred. And with four hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars extra a student, the combination of four hundred and nineteen more, more kids in total and a hundred and fifty dollars more for every student really was impactful for us this year. Special education funding, this was a huge shift typically, or historically, for special education funding. We've received roughly, it goes out four digits, but twenty-nine percent of the cost of special education and roughly seventy percent of the cost of transportation. And they give us that, historically have given us that or the foundation, whatever's higher. Well, now the change for this year is that we would get those percentages still, but in addition, we'd receive seventy-five percent of the foundation allowance. That was a tremendous jump in our special education funding for this year. About, about three hundred and, about three point seven million, rather, jump in, in that area as well as, as well as at-risk funding. So the at-risk funding, that quadrupled for our district this year. We weren't able to even spend it all for this year, and it's not something we'd want to do. It takes time to, to really plan, to, to appropriately use that kind of funding, and so that will happen over the, over the next couple of years. But very glad to see jumps in, in these two areas. Several state grants that we haven't seen in the past, also learning loss grant, roughly seven hundred thousand dollars for that, mental health and school safety, both one point four million dollars. So grants that we are continuing to put to use. We, we didn't spend all of those this year either, as we are developing plans for those. And then some other positive things, interest income even was, was significantly higher than it normally is, at about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars compared to last year was roughly forty-five. And you're looking at about the same amount of money invested, so just a tremendous increase. And then also Public Act eighteen, that's the county special education millage, and that was, was up as well. We received a special allocation that Oakland schools decided on partway through the year of about three hundred thousand dollars. So many positive things for this school year, which will put us in a really good position for next school year as well. Two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, our budget, of course, is a tool, and it's based on a lot of assumptions. I don't have a crystal ball, nobody does. It's, it's based on, on history, a lot of education, a lot of predictions, and of course, we hope very educated guesses, but essentially, a budget is, is a guess. And so that is why we make amendments as we go through the year, as actual things happen, and we can swap out those guesses with, with what actually materializes. We don't have the state budget yet, so our budget is due by June thirtieth. We have to have a balanced budget approved by June thirtieth in order to function come July first. But the state doesn't have to have, have the numbers to us by then, so we're guessing even on, on what they will do. This budget is based on a four hundred and fifty-eight dollar increase in the foundation allowance. That's the increase proposed by the governor and is the middle ground between all three proposals, which is why we adopted that as, as our budget assumption. Eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine students, that's a one hundred and ninety-nine student decline, and that's based on, on two different enrollment projections, both from Plant Row and Cressa, and then we also use a professor out of Michigan State University who takes a look at, at similar data. And I track their accuracy over time and use kind of a blend based on, on the accuracy that I've seen. So one hundred and ninety-nine less students for purposes of funding. Special education funding, we're also, or this budget includes an additional increase. So I had mentioned that we would receive this, this year seventy-five percent of the foundation allowance. Each of the various proposals that have come out so far include an increase. They vary, but this budget includes an increase going from seventy-five percent to eighty-seven point five. And then retirement assistance. The state of Michigan has, over the last several years, provided assistance to districts to help with the cost of, of retirement, and I'm assuming that that assistance continues and is also in all three proposals. Public Act eighteen, the county special education millage, that's predicted by, by Oakland schools to go up roughly seven percent, and that's what's in this budget. The federal grants are, are going down significantly as we've talked about some of the expiration of the, the ESSR funds and others, as we're using those up and the timelines are, are wrapping up, we'll see a decline in those. Interest income, I'm assuming that that, that the positive inflow that we had this year is, is not likely to continue, and so I've really decreased that. And then pay to, pay to participate, our athletic, one piece of our athletic funding that we collect from, from families to have their students involved, we're going to be making a change to that, and that is reflected in, in this budget as well to, to decrease what we're collecting from families. In terms of personnel expenditures, so our, our budget is roughly eighty-five percent personnel, as it should be. We're a service organization, and that's what, what you should expect out of a, out of a school district. In terms of assumptions around salaries and wages, the proposal that you have in front of you today to accept the, the, the WLEA or teacher contract, that is built into, into this budget, as well as comparable agreements with our support groups. So we've talked a lot about that. Public Act one fifty-two, that is the cap that's established by the state and adjusted annually, and it covers the amount that a school district in Michigan is allowed to spend on behalf of their employees on health insurance. And so I've adjusted that according to, to the cap, which is, which is currently known. We've also added or planned to add for next year, three junior kindergarten sections, and the cost and statistics are included in this budget for that. Other expenditures, our property insurance is experiencing a significant increase. We already know what that's going to be. It's going to be about two hundred thousand dollars higher, and that's really a, a function of the increase in property values and the cost of building. Cost of buildings up roughly thirty-three percent, and so with that goes your cost of insurance. Utility and fuel costs, I've adjusted those, and contracted services also to follow what we know will be happening in the next couple of years. So this is a very summarized, we have over sixteen thousand accounts for our general fund alone. So if you take all those sixteen thousand accounts and roll them up, this is a very summarized budget for you of our revenues and expenditures. So heading into, to next year, roughly one hundred and seventy-seven million dollars in, in revenue, and, and you'll see just slightly more than that in our expenditure category. That is what we have really have planned for the, for the last several years is to build up our fund balance. There was a, a big influx of dollars from the various different grants, and we really took that as an opportunity to cover our expenses into the future, to not just spend them all in one year, but to enable us to afford ongoing items, including multi-year contracts with our employees. In, in the absence of that, in the absence of the built-up fund balance, we wouldn't be able to do that. One of the things that is not yet included in here, which will be a significant change, is a GASB, our Governmental Accounting Standards Board, Statement Number Ninety-Six. We implemented eighty-seven last year that related to leases. It's complicated and doesn't make a whole lot of sense, so I won't get into the nuances of it, but ninety-six, we will also have to, to implement. It affects income and expense. It's large. It will have no impact on our bottom line, but is something that, that we'll need to, to put together. We have to read every contract, every single contract that we enter into and determine the, the, the length of it, the, we have to do present value calculations on, on all of them. It's just an enormous amount of work for something that will not impact our bottom line. But I just want you to be aware of it, because you will see adjustments coming down the road that will relate to, to that GASB. So if you take the, the revenues and expenses from the prior page, you'll see that we have a projected net loss of, of roughly eighty-seven thousand. That's really tremendous. It was, when we looked at our, our long-term plan... It was, when we looked at our long-term plan, really, I would have expected to start driving down our fund balance sooner than now. So this is really setting us up to be able to afford, like I mentioned, the multi-year contracts with our employees. We're going to need it, and so this is, puts us in a good place. Our projected fund balance at the end of this year, you'll see, is about $21.2 million, and at the end of next year, just slightly less than that. In terms of a percentage of revenue, 11.95%. Now, that's sort of not entirely real, because as our revenues decline, so as our grant funds go away and our revenues decline, your fund balance becomes a higher percentage because it's a percentage of a smaller number. So just wanted to mention that as well. And we would expect in our planning for that to go down over the next couple of years as we go through our longer-term contracts. Our general fund tax levy, that also needs to be a part of this and is in our paper and is something that we need to approve in order to have our eight different communities that collect taxes for us so that they're able to print our tax bills. I do have to read this, so although annoying, I'm sorry for that. Our principal residence, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, and industrial personal is zero mills. The state, over the last couple of years, has sort of taken that over, at least on a temporary basis, so we will not be collecting any from our principal residence and the rest, as you notice. From our commercial personal properties, 4.7461 mills. All other properties, 16.7461 mills. Both of those are the same as our current tax bills. This is the first year in several that we are not impacted by a Headley rollback. For purposes of Headley, the rate of inflation is 1.079, so you know that our inflation rate has been much higher than that, which is why we are not impacted by Headley. Because we have no collection on our principal residence, there is no impact to our property owner, our homeowners, from an operating standpoint because of that going away. So zero tax collection from an operating standpoint. Our sinking fund levy that was approved and restored last year in November will be .5 mills, and that is projected to generate just over $3.1 million annually. And the debt fund levy, also the same as you would have seen on your tax bills this year, at 4.13 mills. That's on all properties district-wide and is projected to generate almost $26 million to pay our current debts. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Okay, questions, comments from anybody? None? Absolutely none?
Well, they're coming.
With this group, the questions are coming.
I know they're coming. And so I just want to say that we appreciate that something that is very complex, I think I wrote down that you said we have 16,000 accounts, for you to be able to give us this synopsis, we really appreciate it. And for those of you who have been at some of our meetings lately, we've had some extra meetings where we've gone through a lot of information about the budget and how it is put together, et cetera. So we've had a lot of conversation about budget, and I think overall, we're just very pleased to see that we're finally in a situation where we have additional money coming in. It has been so many years since that has happened, and so I'm glad that we're seeing that. But more to come on the budget, and of course, I know you'll answer any questions that the public has, whether you're out at a community coffee or whether, you know, on our website, et cetera. But no other questions for you, so thank you.
That's unbelievable. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to public commentary, and I do have quite a few cards here. And Mrs. Levin, are you okay to time for us tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have a lot of battery there? So we want to thank you for addressing the board tonight. I will go ahead and call the names. You can come up to the podium here, and Mrs. Levin will let you know if you do get near the three-minute time limit. If you are close to that time limit, she will give you a kind of a little bit of a warning. When you do meet that, if you do speak to three minutes or right up to that point, we'll ask you to please finish your thought, and then please step down so that we can get to the next person who wants to address the board. Just for those of you who have not spoken, this is your chance to address the board. We ask that you address the board administration, and if somebody does need to get back to you, we'll try to do so in a pretty timely manner. I will say that it could potentially take a little bit longer this time if we have to get back to you because we have graduations, we have a very busy week coming up here, but we will do our best to get back with you if we need to do them. All right, first person is Ms. Nancy Van Lewen.
I'm Ms. Nancy Van Lewen, and I'm here to speak in support of both of the book offerings tonight, the elementary social studies and the high school social studies books. I'm not going to make extensive comment on it, but I do want you to know I support that. I also would like you to know that it's important that you support the WLEA contract in its ratification. From my past experience, and I was involved in negotiating probably more than a dozen contracts with this district for the WLEA, it's a long, arduous process. It's a process that takes creative thinking, that takes a lot of dialogue, that takes input from a lot of people. And once that agreement is reached, it's a very important document, and so I strongly urge you to support that. I also would like to issue a couple of reminders because I have been present at most of the board meetings since our new board members took their seats. And I would like to caution you that as a board member, you do not represent an individual group or individuals. You represent over 12,000 students. You represent probably around 2,000 employees, I think it's a little less than that. You represent numerous parents, and I think that was presented to us today, 25,000 or something in that nature. And it's very important for you to remember and keep in mind that this is a public school, that you do not represent a certain race, a certain ethnicity. You represent all students with needs, special needs. You represent those with different gender identities. You represent students of different beliefs. You represent students with various languages, and at one point, I don't know the exact statistic, but it was like somewhere in the nature of 80 languages that are spoken in this district. You represent everyone. So listening to a small few, the loudest people are not necessarily the ones who represent the majority. So again, I urge you to support.
30 seconds.
I urge you to support the textbook ratifications and the ratification of the WLEA contract. Thank you.
Our next person is Randy, is it Freed, Fried? I want to get it right. Freed, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia and the board members. I'm here tonight to thank you for using the district's well-qualified teachers to make decisions on curriculum and the books available to our schools. And the books available to our schools. Teachers and educators have earned at least a four-year degree in education and continuing it every year to help make them experts in this field. I am thankful that the school's large variety of literature continuing, contain diverse characters and themes and reflect on our diverse community, including LGBTQ community. I am thankful that the history curriculum is taught with understanding that the history is complex, and our teachers are there to help our children become critical thinkers in a diverse world. The best teachers don't tell our teacher, kids what to think, but help them to question and to see multiple perspectives. We cannot let parents choose the curriculum based on their individual viewpoints and religion. Those are conversations to be had at home.
And next, we have Ella Freed.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bernia and the Board of Education, for allowing me to share my voice. I would like to start off by making it clear that I respect parental rights and religious freedom, and I definitely don't want to alienate anyone because of their religious beliefs. Similarly, I do not want students like myself to feel alienated in classrooms, and that is why I would like to thank Wild Lake Schools for making my school experience welcoming and inclusive. For example, my English classroom has a pride flag, and my math classroom has a sign that says that this is a safe space for all identities. These signs, these signs make me feel welcomed in these classrooms and more likely to participate in things like class discussions because I know that I do not have to hide any part of myself because of who I am. And the same can be said about the diversity in the novels that I've read at school. When I see a reflection of myself on the page of a book, I'm reminded that I am who I'm meant to be and that I belong in this space. I truly, I truly hope that this welcoming environment continues for students who come after me. As I said earlier, I don't want anyone to feel alienated because of their religious beliefs. On the same token, I don't, I don't want religion to limit what children are able to see, hear, and talk about in classrooms. To be clear, I'm not arguing that inappropriate topics be discussed with young children. Rather, I want classrooms to be a safe space for children to be open about their experience and identities, for example, the pronouns that they go by. I would also like to thank the district because I appreciate that history is taught from, through multiple complex lenses, because having a well-rounded view of history allows me to learn from the mistakes of the past and feel pride in the triumphs. Going through my history classes has made me feel proud of my American identity. Having this inclusive environment has made me feel like I am important and that I matter, and it also builds my confidence in what I can achieve in the future. That is why I would like to thank the Wild Lake Schools for giving me this experience, and I hope that future students feel just as welcomed as I did.
And next, we have Jo Brandis.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I'd like to discuss the new AP textbook titled, "American Government: Stories of a Nation." I've got to say, the review process was very professional. I learned that the AP content is controlled by boards, and that there's a list of books that meet the standards. And of course, the AP class is not mandatory and can be used for college credit. And I want to thank Ms. Kathy for being very hospitable. Appreciate that. So my concern is that the information be as balanced and unbiased as possible. Are any of the available textbooks balanced in opinion? If not, what are some ways to ensure that both sides of an event are presented? Here's one example I found in the book that showed some writer bias. On page 53, it talked about the founders' motives. So Columbia professor Charles Beard wrote, "The stories surrounding the framers have shifted over time. The founders of the American Republic have been described as being guided by their own privilege and accused of crafting a government that preserves distinction of wealth and class. Many of the founding fathers were debt holders, but under the Constitution, they would be paid the full value of the bonds." So my comment on that is the Constitution just affirmed what was already in the Articles of Confederation, and it was, we made sure that the US didn't default on the debt, and that's not mentioned in the text. What is interesting, too, is I was informed that every 10 years, these books need to be upgraded. So Professor Beard made these comments in 1913, and since then, they've been rejected by many modern historians. But here's another view, point of view, of the 56 founding fathers who signed the Declaration of Independence. Just the signing of meant that they would be hanged for treason if they were caught. John Hart, at 65, he was pursued while trying to make it home to his dying wife. Unfortunately, she died before he made it home, and his 13 children never seen again. Abraham Clark had two sons who were captured and held on a prison ship. Clark was offered his sons in exchange for pledging loyalty to England. He chose his country. Of the 56 who signed, nine died of wounds, five were in prison, 12 had their homes completely burned, yet not one defected or went back on his pledged word. Does this sound like men driven by wealth and class? So if this is how such esteemed men are portrayed in the book, can we trust that the chapter on public opinion discussing current social issues will be fair and balanced? So what is the answer? I'm not sure that any book will ever be completely unbiased. I think the students, parents, and teachers need to be open to discuss and debate information in textbooks. If there's errors in content, it should be fed back to the publishers to be corrected. Since these are AP classes, are for some of the highest achievers, I think they deserve the best. Thank you.
And next, we have Jennifer Lacrosse.
My name is Jennifer Lacrosse, and I am the K-12 Math Science Coach for Wild Lake Schools. Tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize the remarkable work being done by our teachers in science classrooms. These unsung heroes are making a profound impact on our students by creating science classrooms that will help shape the next generation of scientists, engineers, medical professionals, teachers, and innovators. Over the school year, I have had the privilege to visit many science classrooms, and amazing things are happening. Science teachers are promoting collaboration and teamwork in science. Through group projects, lab activities, and scientific discussions, teachers encourage students to work together, share ideas, and solve problems collectively. By fostering collaboration, teachers are preparing their students to thrive in a world where scientific breakthroughs often require interdisciplinary collaboration. In Laura Jennings' biology classrooms, student teams created working models of the human leg using recycled materials. All of our physics teachers have incorporated our new physics equipment into team-based, hands-on learning where students collect and analyze data regularly. In Laura Shippa's middle school classrooms, student teams work together to create models using chemical equations to explain photosynthesis and respiration. And in Emily Whitney's third-grade science lesson, students found that a sponge can soak up more water than its own mass. At all three levels, students are engaging in appropriate scientific practices and are using scientific vocabulary, math, and literacy skills to make sense of science concepts. On a personal note, my family has lived in this community for over 20 years. My three children have had the privilege of attending Wild Lake Schools. The rigorous curriculum and excellent teachers provided the foundation for my oldest daughter to continue to pursue a science-related career as a doctor. She's actually in her fourth year of medical school she just started. My son is a recent graduate from Western Michigan University, and our youngest daughter just finished her first year at Michigan State, and she's pursuing a degree as a special education teacher. All of my children were inspired by their teachers and coaches here and have often spoke of them and continue to speak of them. Our family is not unique. Daily, I hear stories from neighbors, community members, and business members who are proud to share stories about the amazing things that are happening in our schools. In conclusion, teachers are doing great things in science classrooms and all classrooms. They are fueling curiosity, embracing technology, and promoting collaboration. These dedicated educators are shaping the scientific minds of tomorrow, instilling a love for learning, and equipping their students with the skills they need to thrive in a rapidly changing world. Thank you.
Next is Ellen McDonald.
My name is Ellen McDonald, and I'm a parent of two students in Wild Lake. One of them attends Wild Lake Western, and one, Sarah Banks. And I'm also the math and science coordinator for Wild Lake Schools. I feel lucky that I get to work with the students, teachers, and administrators I feel lucky that I get to work with the students, teachers, and administrators and the families in this district. Tonight, I'd like to spend three minutes talking about mathematics, everybody's favorite subject.[607.11][607.11](LAUGHTER) Our standards for mathematics in Michigan have two components. The first is the mathematical skills, concepts, and procedures. The second are the practice standards. Those are the habits of mind that mathematicians have to help them make sense of the mathematical world around them. Tonight, I'm going to highlight one of those practices, modeling with mathematics. With modeling, it means that they use representations like drawings, tools, graphs, objects, or equations to make sense of a situation. It's amazing to see how the students and teachers are interacting with this concept in their classrooms. In kindergarten, students in Amy Miller and Nicole Lindblade's classes are using Lincoln cubes to model numbers to see how large they are and to be able to make comparison statements. In second grade, Dan Love is working with his students to write number stories and then to create pictures to show what is happening. My favorite, Alex going to the store to buy four boxes of six donuts, and will he have enough to share? Third graders in Rachel's Cars, Rachel Carr's class are busy using strategies to make sense of multiplication facts so they can see how one fact builds upon another. In fourth grade, in Erin Phaley's class, students are learning how to use what they don't know yet to figure out, what they do know to help them with what they don't know yet. They have access to tools to help them make sense of the mathematics. And in our middle schools, teachers like Amy Hurley, Cindy Nazerty, Sharon Ratzloff, Angie Gross, Amber Tatum, and Jamie Gluski are using vertical whiteboards to help students make their thinking visible so that students can learn from each other. Craig Charnas and Kevin Zero, Zero are using Desmos to make students, to help students make sense of linear relationships and to see how the rate of change affects the slope of a graph. In our high schools, teachers like Amy Clark are using Desmos to model exponential graph change, and Linda Hine and James Malat are using multiple representations to make sense of mathematical situations. Rob Ritter is using strategies to help students refine their thinking so that their explanations or models of geometry ideas are clear and concise. I could go on and on. As a parent, I will be forever grateful to Pat Dzinski, Kristen Dzinski, and Dave Rogers for creating a community of musicians where all students belong and all students are, feel that they are part of something big. We have so many things to be proud of in Wald Lake, and I'm glad that I get to work here every day.[757.72][757.72](APPLAUSE)
Next, we have Suzy Crafton.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for showing up at the board meeting tonight, and thank you to the board and administration for the opportunity for public comment. Tonight, I'd first like to thank Dr. Bernia and the entire instructional team that he oversees. The eye-ready growth is phenomenal and is a testament to the hard-working, professional educators and the aligned instructional and curriculum systems that are present throughout our district. Our, our educators are experts in child development, instruction, curriculum, and assessment, and fostering inclusive environments for all children so that they can grow to their full potential. They deserve to be respected and trusted as the professionals they have been proven to be. Therefore, I urge the board to respect the recommendation of the professional educators on the Social Studies Curriculum Review Committee. For context, I'm an alum of the district, a parent of a recent graduate that was set up for success both in college and career thanks to the rigorous academics and career technical courses offered to our diverse student body. I am speaking to you today from my actual lived experience in this district with direct experiences with our actual teachers, administrators, parents, and students, and our actual curriculum and materials that are used in our actual district. I continue to choose to send my youngest to this district that I love so much and has served this community so well for so many years. Thank you again to the education professionals deeply committed and to, and prepared to ensure our youth are ready for a future we cannot yet imagine. I implore you to value the voice of those in this district that have direct district experience. With steady leadership and trust for our education, our educator professionals, we can continue to thrive as an inclusive and supportive district for all. Thanks for your time.[893.79][893.79](APPLAUSE)
And next we have Haley, and it also says Ari Mullet. So I don't know if that's two people or just one. Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Haley, but I go by Ari, and I'm an 11th grader from Central. I would just like to thank the board for making the schools to be so welcoming and inclusive. I came out as non-binary this year, and all of my teachers accepted me and quickly adjusted to my new name and pronouns. My classrooms are now a safe space where I can be myself, and I'm so grateful for that. I'm thankful for the school supporting all students, no matter how they identify, because these open classrooms make the lives of kids like me so much easier. So thank you again for letting students like me feel safe at school, and I hope that this continues in the future.
And next we have Kelly. Is it Schnippa? My close?[967.20][967.20](LAUGHTER)
Okay, thanks. I appreciate, appreciate your grace. I'm trying.[974.68][974.68](LAUGHTER)
So thanks again for the opportunity to speak, as everyone has said, and many have said much more eloquently than I can. But I had to talk tonight. I'm sorry. I grew up in Royal Oak, and I moved to Chicago with my, and I met my family and created a family there. And when we wanted to come back to Michigan, it's because we wanted the education that Michigan has to offer. We looked for places we could afford, as well as places we could grow. And a good friend offered Wixom as a place to look at, and I had lived here in '90 when I was single and crazy, and, in the Stone Ridge Apartments. So thank you, Stone Ridge Apartments. I had a good time. And now I'm back, and I'm a homeowner, and a bonus is that we got a wonderful band. Never knew my kids were so musical, so thank you, Mr. Rogers and the Dzinskys. But what I really wanted to talk about was the wonderful diversity in the curriculum, the spiraling of the education that, like, was mentioned by Ms. McDonald of the way that we bring it up, and, I'm sorry, the math educator as well. All that spiraling has brought in real-world applications, plus math, plus numbers, plus social studies, plus government. My daughters are so smart because of the opportunity that they have in this district. My one daughter has come out, my other daughter is just crazy, you know, but they're, they're, they have made great connections with their teachers, who are welcoming, who are inclusive, with diversity, with understanding, with integration, with passion, and with love, hugs when they need them, and reprimands when they do as well. Keep the strong curriculum. Keep the diversity that has made us part of a world-leading program that brings our children into Western Michigan, University of Michigan. We want our children to grow. We want our community to stay welcome. I, religion is beautiful, but you know what? It's not in my public education that I chose for my children. It's a discussion we have at home. Our diversity is part of our world. Our inclusion is part of our world. This hate that has been risen, when we need to love each other to make ourselves stronger, to show how much passion we have, our education that can grow us, to make our nation strong. It begins with diversity. It begins with inclusion. It begins with acceptance from special education to people from different races and cultures, LGBTQ.
Thirty seconds.
Keep the curriculum strong. Listen to these educated teachers that have founded our great Wald Lake School District that I am proud to be a member of, and every day, I look outside and go, this is the neighborhood that is growing my children to be stronger than I ever could. Keep it strong. Keep it diverse.
Next, we have Teresa Renaud.
Sitting a little too long there. Good evening. I'm Teresa Renaud, District Director for State Senator Runstad, here supporting our mutual constituents, the elected board, our superintendent, and the administration. I just want to say, you guys have been working really hard, and tonight was a great example of some great programs that are in the works right now. I attended Superintendent's Community Hour last week or the week before. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for all that you're doing. I just want to give a shout out for the academic excellence in terms of the focus and the financial, financial responsibility. So two huge areas that will continue to keep our district hopefully leading the state. Thank you.[1213.11][1213.11](APPLAUSE)
Next, we have Robin Mifsud.
My name is Robin Mifsud. And I live in the Wald School, School District. I'm concerned about the books that are in our school libraries and classrooms for our children to read, and I understand the book, The Lovely Bones by Alice Sebold, is in all three of our Wald Lake High Schools. This fictional novel is about a 14-year-old girl who is brutally raped and murdered by an adult male neighbor. The rape and murder goes on in great deals, in great detail for several pages. Reading it made me feel anxious and sick to my stomach, and I could see no benefit for any child reading a book that will make them feel anxious and uneasy. I also have a big issue with the author. Alice Sebold is white and was raped by a black man while she was in college. The police found a man they thought was the criminal and put him in a lineup. Alice chose a different man in the lineup. She knew this and allowed the police to change the records to the original man the police brought in, Anthony Broadwater, a black man. Based on Alice pointing to Anthony in court, he was found guilty. Alice knew Anthony was not the man she chose in the lineup, and yet she allowed Anthony, an incident, an innocent man, to serve 16 years in prison. After serving his full term, a judge overturned the conviction of Anthony Broadwater. For this reason, I don't think we need any books written by Alice Sebold in our schools or libraries. Thank you for listening to me.[1315.35][1315.35](APPLAUSE)
Next, we have Sandra Byer.
Good evening. As she mentioned, my name is Sandra Byer, and I'd like to thank Dr. Bernia for responding a few meetings ago to someone who complained about music on a bus, and it was resolved. So it's nice to know that our administration and our board follows through with things that parents are concerned with. I really appreciate that. Also, I've learned that on your website, you have a form called Citizens Request for Reconsideration of Instructional Materials, and I did find that on your website, and I think more parents ought to be aware of that because we don't all agree with things that are appropriate or age-appropriate. I wanted to talk this evening about a book called Red: A Crayon's Story, and it's in two of our elementary libraries. And a synopsis of this book says that Red's factory-applied label clearly says he's red, but despite the best efforts of his teacher, fellow crayons, and art supplies, and family members, he cannot seem to do anything right until a new friend offers a fresh perspective. It's about being true to your inner self. The crayon is really blue inside. One group of educators said about this book, "How do you know if you're a blue crayon wrapped in a red label? This could be an opportunity to discuss being different than the way you appear and the relationship between what you do and who you are. If age-appropriate, this set of questions can lead to a discussion about sexuality or gender or many other things." Now, this book doesn't seem to be, to be really about crayons. I think it's a soft sell about gender identity, and as more and more of this literature is absorbed into the minds of children, they may someday desire to transition to the opposite sex and see no problem with it. If you allow various kinds of pride flags and other things in the classroom, you're giving a green light to those activities and transgenderism, which is often included in the colors of the flags. It reminds me of the Marlboro Man. Now, most of you are probably not old enough to remember those commercials. However, he was a chunk, and he was a good-looking hunk of a man.
Thirty seconds.
And he had a cigarette hanging out of his mouth. Now, how do you think he looked 50 years later with lung cancer? I don't think he would have been very attractive. What, what, what will kids and youth experience if they transition and later have the multiple kinds of medical problems and regrets with the desire to re-transition? It's horrendous to sell an emotionally and physically destructive lifestyle to children and youth. Schools should not be passively allowing this material in their curriculum or libraries or endorsing it in any way. Please stick to reading, writing, and arithmetic, and the great teachers that you have teaching that. Thank you.[1538.82][1538.82](APPLAUSE)
Next, we have Becky Behrens.
Good evening, members of the board and administrators. Let me bring up an issue about certain books in our school libraries. For the benefit of the public, I am a retired emergency physician, and so I have some acquaintance with medical issues, obviously. One book that is in three of our high school libraries is entitled Becoming Nicole: The Transformation of an American Family by Amy Ellis Nutt. This book's synopsis says the following: "The inspiring true story of a transgender girl and her identical twin brother in an ordinary American family's extraordinary journey to understand, nurture, and celebrate the uniqueness in us all. It's a story of an extraordinary girl who fought for the right to be herself. It's a story of a Republican NRA member father who overcame confusion and fear to become a vocal advocate of trans rights," and so forth. Seriously, the right for a female child to be herself. How does a child really understand what her true self is, especially when the majority of children with gender dysphoria grow out of it? There are lots of problems with this despite the media and academic parade which is endorsing this. Did you know that Dr. Anthony Fauci's National Institute of Allergies and Infectious Diseases has funded almost $500,000 to inject hormones into male monkeys to make them females? Yes, a transgender monkey experiment. Why? Because transgender women have very high rates of HIV. In fact, 49 times higher than non-transgender individuals, and scientists are trying to figure out why. University of Alabama researchers are now studying how testosterone treatment for women used in transitioning to males weakens disease-fighting microbes in them, making their immune systems weaker. I could go on and on. Children who take puberty blockers have significantly less bone density than their peers, which puts them at great risk for early onset osteoporosis and fractures in adulthood, and these effects may last a lifetime, not reversible. Most kids who take puberty blockers end up on cross-sex hormones. These hormones increase the risk of cardiovascular disease and increase risk of breast and uterus cancers, mood swings, and even psychosis. There's no long-term data to determine the risk of ovarian cancer. Medical academic societies are very politicized and keyed into supporting the prevailing leftist cultural winds of change, especially when the NIH has billions of dollars to dispense for research, which is the lifeblood of medical academics, especially when Medicare, Medicaid, and insurance companies set the protocols for patient treatments. Hospitals and doctors don't want to lose their licenses and reimbursements. University professors who push back risk losing tenure in their jobs. So it is a big deal.
Time.
When there are books in school libraries that praise the transgender movement and extol those who transition as brave and courageous, whatever happened to truth and advertising? Let me finish my thought. It is criminal not to inform kids what might really happen to them medically if they embrace this ideology. Let us hope we protect the well-being of kids in our school district and halt the popularity charade of transgenderism. Thank you.[1764.23][1764.23](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Next, we have Allison Abramson, or, hopefully I said that right. Thank you.
Good evening. I... I'm a parent of two kids. One, I have pulled out of our district. He's now in a private school. Because of all of these issues. He was not well- He was not welcomed, and I fear for the safety of every kid that has any sort of identity or sexuality or any other neurodiversity or anything else that they are not welcomed in this district. It makes me sad. I've been sitting here crying through this. Like, it's just... I feel like we're going backwards in life. Like, are we going to come for the African-Americans? Are we going to come for the Jews? Are we going to come for the Native Americans? Like, why are we coming for the...
We need to let her speak, please. Thank you.
Like, it is... We're in 2023. It is time for everyone to feel welcome. I have another child in the district. She was very concerned about being in here. I have promised her that she feels that she is safe here, but as I sit here and hear everything and hear all of this backlash, I wonder, is it really safe for her to be here too? And I will have no problem pulling her if things are not okay here. And I think that I've heard multiple families that have already removed their kids and more that are on their way to removing them because the district is making decisions that are just not safe for all kids. So I know the district motto is "Every child, every day. Start practicing it."
Next we have Tracy Walker.
Are you Tracy Blanca?
Oh, Blanca or Walker?
Walker. Oh, Walker, I'm sorry.
Well, you're next, by the way, just so you know.
Hello. When it comes to the education of children in Wald Lake, I put my trust for my kids and others in the highly-regarded teachers and school administration every day, not simply once a month at a board meeting. I trust those educators and administrators know the state standards they need to teach, are cognizant of the learners in their classrooms, and that's what they are trained to do. I trust a committee of trustworthy, trained individuals reviewed the textbooks and methodologies they chose to make my child ready for any AP or state test, and that their review is thorough. I trust this process is not clouded by any select people's personal bias or misinformation without meeting minutes or facts to back up the case. I trust that this trust was verified again tonight in those improvements you saw in the iReady data. The Michigan Association of School Board states that the role of a board member in curriculum is to, quote, "approve recommended curriculum and textbooks based on standards, goals, and policies established by the board." Let's take a look at the words found in the Wald Lake Board policy. 3004 Textbooks and Other Instructional Materials. The superintendent may utilize "well-qualified administrators and teachers to assist in the selection of textbooks to be recommended to the board for approval and to the extent required by Michigan law and all those numbers that come with it." It does not note board members. This trust extends to our Media Center materials. 3005 Selection of Media Materials. The board intends that students be provided access to a wide variety of educational materials in various media to support learning. The superintendent is authorized to make or approve purchases in the Media Center and may receive recommendations for such purchases from professional staff members, parents, and students. Let me repeat that again: professional staff members, parents, and students. Your own policy does not mention board members. Again, to instructional methodology, including inquiry-based learning. 3003 Instruction. To the maximum extent feasible, student instruction will be delivered using research-based and peer-reviewed instructional methodologies. The superintendent may develop regulations that are consistent with this policy. Again, the superintendent. I would hope any board members who are not in favor of supporting the work of, quote, "well-qualified administrators and teachers" and your own board policy have provided specific cited evidence of how their decisions do not meet the set policies and will have those available to be provided where requested.
Tracy Blanca, thank you.
Hi. Thank you to the board for allowing us to speak. My name is Tracy Blanca. I'm a parent of two students. One goes to Wald Lake Schools, one voluntarily chose to leave. We've... I'm going to cry, I don't know why, but we moved here specifically so that we could send our kids to Keith Elementary and because we felt the community is a welcoming one. And I hear some of the older people here. I don't know if they're afraid of the diversity in the community, but the community is changing. It has changed. I moved here in 2006, and I've seen a lot of changes over time. And if we really do want to live up to "every child, every day," we will look at the diversity of our student population. I'm an educator. I work in a neighboring school district. I have students who ask to be called by different pronouns. I oblige because it gives them a level of comfort. It is sad to me that families like the Abramsons have had to pull their students because their students with gender differences don't feel safe and welcome in our community. As an educator, as a parent, as a mom, as a good neighbor, it's... I find it very disturbing and sad, and I'm sorry that some of the community members don't want to see the diversity and the change in our local community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next we have Heather Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Heather Martinez. I go by the pronoun she, her, and hers, and I believe in everyone's right to choose their own. I'm the graduate of Wald Lake Western, a parent of three current students, and a proud to be, very proud to be, a former public school educator and administrator. I want to wish everyone a happy first day of Pride Month. Thank you to all our educators that provide a safe space for all students. I'm asking for the third time tonight, where is our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee stand? I've asked before and I'm asking again, what's the status of this committee? My understanding is that it was ended abruptly by Assistant Superintendent Lawns. Are there plans to bring it back? Were the curriculum and tonight's agenda reviewed by that committee? It's my understanding that one of the board members said that they would not support any materials that are related to inquiry-based education. I want to share with you the exact definition of what inquiry-based learning is. Inquiry-based learning is a learning process that engages students by making real-world connections through exploration and high-level questioning. It's an approach to learning that encourages students to engage in problem-solving and experiential learning. Inquiry-based education is mandated by the Michigan Department of Education and the basis for most of our curriculum as such. The purpose of inquiry-based learning is to create citizens in our society with higher-level thinking skills, the ability to problem-solve, and not ones who are narrow-minded and believe that there is only one right way. In summary, if you don't understand and support the basic foundations on which public education is built, you should not be sitting on a public school board.
Next we have Kathy Cubic. Kathy, you have noted on here that you're not sure if you want to speak. Do you want to speak?
Okay. I wasn't sure, but today, I have to say, I'm old, and I was taught a different way. When I went to school, we were... We had one flag in each classroom. It was the American flag. I was taught a pride in the United States. We were taught our country was a melting pot of many countries to become the greatest country in the world. Immigrants came and they brought their cultures, and they were allowed to still have their cultures: Irish Catholics, Jews, Muslims. We had everybody. We were taught a love of America. Patriotism is one way America became the greatest country on earth. No culture was pushed on anyone. I worked in these schools. I had different kids, all different kinds of kids in my classroom. My goal was to make every kid know that they were worthy, to know that they were cared greatly for, that they were being taught and being brought up in a great country. That's what I was taught. I wanted them to be happy, to go home and believe in themselves. I worked in special ed. Their IQs were up to about 90 at the most. I love those kids, and if you teach a child that they are loved, they're going to do great things. This... Tonight, it has upset me that we are dividing. We're constantly dividing, and I'm tired of it! And I hope that people realize this is a great country! And you should all be fighting for it, no matter what you are. But we need one flag in a classroom, and it is the American flag!
Tim Sawmiller.
Caught me off-guard there. Hello, Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. My pronouns are he, him, and his. Last month, remarks were made here opposing the purchase of the new AP Government textbook, American Government Stories of a Nation. Those remarks prompted me to purchase a copy of that textbook myself and review it. This book was written by two distinguished educators, one clearly liberal, one clearly conservative. They have produced a book that presents the political history of our country plainly and factually. There is no modern moral lens applied to this book. A point was made that slavery was not defended by the founding fathers. Well, it wasn't denounced either. An essay written by James Madison after the draft of the proposed Constitution was published and is quoted on pages 38 and 39. He was even aware of the inherent contradictions regarding slaves as both property and members of society, but that's about as far as any founding father would go. And yet, this textbook renders no opinion of its own. There is no denigration of the founding fathers. The facts presented show that they were human with human failings, just as humans are today. Reviewing other sections has revealed that there is no bias in this textbook, either in favor of nor against any political party. I believe this textbook to be an excellent resource for any government course. As for school libraries, certain books complained about that this board may not be suitable for elementary or even middle-school readers, but that does not make them pornography. These books are not categorized as pornography because they do not predominantly appeal to prurient interests, and they have serious artistic and literary value. Public schools are by definition public. They are secular. Like it or not, they are a microcosm of society. There's a wide variety of ethnicities, religions, cultures, and lifestyles out in the real world. Public schools are the real world, and public schools will have the same variety. Parents' desire to raise their children as they see fit is naturally their right, but that right does not imply a right of control over what others see, hear, and do. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the right to freedom of expression, and that right encompasses intellectual freedom, which includes an individual's right to receive information on a wide range of topics and from a variety of viewpoints. Libraries play an important role in facilitating that free and open access to information. There is a reason that amendment is number one. Thank you.
Next we have Mike Wise. Is that correct? Thank you.
I'm Mike... I'm Mike Wise, and tonight there'll be a vote regarding these two books, an American Advanced Placement, American Government textbook, and a social studies book. Tonight, I would like to comment... I would like to respond to the comments made at the last board meeting pertaining to the Advanced Placement, American Government textbook. Information was presented that does not agree with the facts. It was said that this book was an attack on Republicans and mocks them on every single page. The pictures and images in this book are left-leaning, that it lacks balance and is very biased. None of this is true. I spent over six hours reviewing this book, including looking at over 50 images and graphics. This book provides an accurate, fair, humorous, and entertaining learning experience. Michigan schools using this book include Bloomfield Hills, Clinton Township, Detroit, Northville, Ockhamus, and Sterling Heights. It is also used by the National Heritage Academy in the Grand Rapids area, a Betsy DeVos-supported, for-profit, educational management charter school. Take that... Yeah. By not approving... By not approving the use of this textbooks, this textbook, our students are put at a disadvantage when taking the American Government Advanced Placement test for college credit at the end of the year. This is a great book. I wish this book was available when I was taking American Government in the 12th grade. There are certain elements here in Commerce Township and Michigan that are trying to make it difficult for great schoolteachers and administrators to move forward and to do their jobs in hopes that they will become fed up and leave the teaching profession. This element wants to turn Michigan into Florida or Texas. We can't allow that to happen. Thank you to the board, the teachers of Wald Lake Schools, and especially Dr. Bernia for all you do.
Next we have Cory Hensley.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cory Hensley. For those of you that don't know me, I am president of the current Parent Advisory Committee for Special Services in Wald Lake. The Parent Advisory Committee, if you are not aware, works in advisory capacity to help parents navigate the special education system, which can be very difficult. One of our other goals is to increase awareness and inclusive opportunities. As Mr. Swineheart had spoke this evening, one of our points of pride is starting up Unified Sports, and we hope to grow that and continue that next year into the middle school level as well. I'm here tonight just to highlight a few of the things that we have done as a PAC this spring that I wanted to bring to your attention. On May 9, we held our Shining Stars Award Ceremony. In the past, it was held here on this night, the very last board meeting. And so I'm very proud that this year it was held at Wald Lake Western High School. We had over 40 parents or teach... I'm sorry. We had over 40 nominations. Those could be anyone associated, working with a student with special needs. So we had teachers, parapros, bus drivers nominated, and it was exciting to be there to honor everyone. We had over 100 guests for the evening. We had board members. Dr. Bernia, thank you for your attendance, and we hope to see all of you next year as we continue this. We had two top winners. One of them was a Tier One teacher in the Adult Transitions Program, Cory... I'm sorry, I cannot say his last name for the life of me. And Olivia Blumer in the Buddy Up Club at Wald Lake Central. So we were very honored to honor our top two winners. Again, and so look for nominations, those viewing tonight. Look for the nominations form for next year to come out sometime in January to nominate those who work with children with special needs. On May 23, Dr. Bernia and Mr. Russo, thank you for asking PAC to put together a special PAC meeting. This, as many of you know, Ms. Moore has resigned her position as Director of Special Services, and we begin search for a new person to fill this position. I want to thank the board and Dr. Bernia for making this a cabinet-level position. So it'll be good to see that person, new person, sitting here at the table as the superintendent of Special Services.
Thirty seconds.
It was nice that parents were able to voice their concerns and qualities that they look for in the new... This new position, and I look forward to be a part of the interview committee. On Monday, just to plug, this coming Monday, we are hosting Secure Planning Strategies. They are a financial planning firm, and they will discuss how to life-plan for a child with special needs. This will be at 6:00 PM at Clifford Smart Middle School, so we invite any parent is welcome to attend this important workshop for parents. And you can find us on the Special Services website, Facebook, and Twitter. So I thank you for this evening.
Ben Malonis.
Hello. I'm Ben Malonis, a teacher at Wald Lake Elementary, and I'm here to talk about the great things that happened at Wald Lake L. I was here last month, but didn't... Only three minutes is not enough, so I want to talk about... We recently, at Wald Lake L, we recently hosted a family math night. math night, and we were fortunate to have Ellen McDonald come and speak to the-- speak to the parents about how math instruction has changed over the years. And she worked with the parents, I worked with the kids, and we gave all the kids left with this great, cool math toolkit to play games with their families at home. And in our exit survey, a hundred percent of the parents said that they now have a better understanding of mathematics instructions, thanks to Ellen. And they also said, a hundred percent of the families also said they would attend another family math night if given the opportunity. Another great thing at Waldo Lake L is that we-- just this past week, we have a brand-new book vending machine. It's pretty cool. It's like, you know, a candy vending machine, but it's full of books. And that was done through the use of some of our Title-I funds, but our-- to make it inclusive for all students, our PTA has agreed to help stock it with books. And so, we're looking forward to having that ready for students this fall. Today, we had our annual field day. If you ever get a chance, come to Waldo Lake Elementary's Field Day. It is the best day of the-- you know, it is one of the most special days of the year. It's a great time for students, volunteers, and staff. And I want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Bill Cox, our PE teacher, for setting this whole day up. It was amazing. We loved it. I also want to address the proposed social studies curriculum for second and third grade. The Waldo Lake Elementary teachers are excited about the possibility of a new social studies resource. We encourage the board to adopt them. I also want to encourage the board to ratify the WLA contract. I want to thank all the negotiating team who-- on both sides, quite honestly, because it's a nice contract. I'm very-- I've been here a long time, I've seen a lot of contracts. This is nice. You know, it's a very nice contract. Thank you. And please, my thank-you in advance. Finally, someone mentioned--
Thirty seconds.
Someone mentioned it was Pride Month. Today, on the first day of Pride, I am proud of many things at Waldo Lake, in Waldo Lake. But tonight, I was the most proud of those two students who stood up here and what they said. It just-- I mean, you can hear my voice. I am so proud of that young people. I wish I was like that when I was their age. But I'm glad that I'm part of something that made them who they are.
Time. Andrew Abraham? Abraham? Oh, Andrea, I'm sorry. I'm-- it's Andrea, right? Sorry, I said it wrong.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Abraham, and I support social studies in ELA-K-12. Prior to this, I was a social studies, English, and psychology teacher at Waldo Lake Western. In my position, I am fortunate enough to work with many teachers across the district and see the great things that they are doing to support our Waldo Lake students. In our social studies classes, students are engaged in independent and collaborative activities that help grow the knowledge, skills, intellectual processes, and dispositions to be actively engaged in fulfilling their responsibility of civic participation. This includes debates and discussions, historical analysis, mapping, field trips, and more. In our secondary English classes, teachers focus on developing students' reading, writing, speaking, and critical-thinking skills while fostering a love for literature and language. Students are working with a variety of texts which promote understanding, enhance critical thinking, expand vocabulary, and reflect real-world complexities. While there are hundreds of examples of teachers doing great things in Waldo Lake, I want to call out a few. At Keith Elementary, kindergarten teachers Lindsay Etchman and Carissa Byback developed an inquiry unit that asks students to think about, how can people work together to get what they need and want? This project culminated with kindergartners being asked to identify a need and a want for their classroom and how they might fulfill that need. The kids were highly engaged. Third graders from Pleasant Lake and Dublin have already or are planning to tour the state Capitol as well as the Historical Museum to learn more about the state's government and history. According to Martha Rogers, third-grade teacher at Dublin, the students were excited and curious and asking all kinds of questions. Matt Hewitt, fifth-grade teacher, had his students work collaboratively using Flipgrid to share the unheard voices of the American Revolution. In middle school, all eighth-grade students have had or will have the opportunity to visit Washington, DC. Students from Creek wrote letters to honor flight veterans to thank them for their service and are planning to personally deliver them in June. At Northern High School, AP Gov. teacher Carrie Lopez had her class attend a Youth and Government Day presented by Oakland County. They had the opportunity to hear and interact with a panel that represented many members of local government. Lastly, Anna Murphy, English teacher at Waldo Lake Western, had her students engage in a research project that ended with them creating a slide presentation using images and writing to convey what they had learned. They presented their digital projects in groups, and listeners were allowed to ask the expert questions. These are just a few of the things that I would love to talk about. But I want to end by saying how proud I am to work with the teachers that I work with. They are truly a dedicated group of professionals who possess the expertise, the knowledge, and skills necessary for teaching. They work tirelessly to cover what is required while also engaging young people who have a lot more distractions than many of us did when we were in school. Thank you to the teachers, and thank you, members of the board, for working with teachers to help our Waldo Lake community.
Next, we have Christine Titus.
Good evening. I'm Christine Titus. I'm a proud instructional specialist at Hickory Woods Elementary, but my husband and I have also been residents of Commerce Township in the Waldo Lake School District for thirty years. So, thirty-one years, actually, now. But I was very gratified tonight to see all students celebrated, our athletes, our artists, performing artists. Our four children had the opportunity to go through many extracurricular programs like that, as well as achieving academic excellence from this district. So, I'd like to shout-out to all of their teachers as well. I'd like to publicly thank the Foundation for Excellence for the grant I received this year to help support our youngest learners with the purchase of some decodable books, in addition to what the district also provided. Can never have enough books in kids' hands. I've had a chance to-- I kind of stole some of Mrs. Kohansky's thunder last meeting, but looking at data in my building, I saw that the foundational skills are pretty solid at Hickory Woods, and I'm very proud of that. Through the collaboration with my colleagues within our building, through the MTSS process, and also working with my instructional specialist counterparts in other buildings, some of who are here tonight, we've really worked hard to make sure that kids are getting what they need in those foundational skills. So, I'm very pleased and happy to work with those folks. We're all working to support student achievement. I'd like to give a shout-out to our new principal, Lisa Shannon, who's done an awesome job in her first year in our building and just guiding us very-- with a lot of empathy and compassion. And I watch her work with kids on a daily basis, and it's a marvelous thing to see. Also, finally, I would like to thank our current and past board members, who throughout this twenty-two, twenty-three school year, for their support of what we do to help make our students successful in all ways. So, thank you very much.
Michelle Black.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. My name is Michelle Black, and I am a proud twenty-five-year employee of Waldo Lake Schools. Currently, my role is the English Language Arts Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator. I am so grateful to be able to do the work that we do in Waldo Lake, and I feel so fortunate to be amongst such amazing students, teachers, administrators, and families. I wanted to take a few minutes tonight to highlight some of the incredible literacy work we have done at the elementary level this year. We are in our fifth year of using an explicit and systematic phonics curriculum in our K-2 classrooms, and we continue to see tremendous growth in our students' foundational skills, particularly around phonemic awareness and phonics. Our teachers have begun to integrate meaningful, decodable texts into their small-group instruction to ensure that students continue to grow in their phonics skills while also growing as readers and writers. We continue to grow and expand our instructional coaching model in all our elementary schools, thanks to the hard work of our instructional specialists. This model includes intentional and timely professional learning for our teachers, modeling best instructional practices in our classrooms, and using data to inform instructional decisions. With an emphasis on small-group instruction, our teachers are able to meet the instructional needs of all students, and we continue to see amazing growth in our data. In many schools, teachers have participated in something called Mega Labs, which are as exciting as they sound. In a Mega Lab, teams of the instructional specialists work across the district in classrooms to model and coach literacy instruction for the day. They have an opportunity then to debrief and support the classroom instructional work going forward, and we've gotten incredible feedback from our teachers, administrators, and even the students who participated in this work. The level of collaboration around literacy continues to grow and thrive here in Waldo Lake. We continue to not only teach the standards, but also foster a love of learning in our students, and I could not be more proud of the work that our teachers do every day. Thank you.
And Mr. Peterson has asked if we would just take a few minutes break, just to make sure that we're still focused. Is everybody okay if we take-- what do you want, Mr. Peterson? Five minutes?
Five.
Five minutes, okay. Thank you. On our agenda is administrative commentary. Dr. Bernia?
Thank you, Madam President. In light of the agenda that we still have to go and the fact that it's getting late, our team met in the hallway a second ago, and we've decided to forego administrative commentary tonight. But we do want to say we're all very proud of the work that we're doing and very excited about graduation on Sunday.
Sounds good. All right. And next, we have board commentary. Anything, Mrs. Fernandez?
I'll follow suit with the cabinets.
Mr. Seigler?
Sorry.
That's all right.
You know, I want to applaud everybody who spoke today and the audience overall for listening to everybody. The key, as I have said to many people, is listening and understanding. To the parents who had to pull their children out or didn't feel safe, I want to apologize because we should never have to have any of our children in that position. As I look at our mission statement, you know, "In partnership with parents and community is to become the best educational system in America," so all students, and I like the word "all students," demonstrate they are caring, responsible, and knowledgeable citizens. Ladies and gentlemen, that's our future. Those are the people that we are going to depend on as we grow older, and they raise our children and our grandchildren. So, I want to thank everybody, and it really meant a lot to me tonight to hear everybody speak, and thank you.
Okay, anything, Ms. Dice?
No, I don't really have anything tonight, except for just to congratulate all the seniors that are going to be graduating on Sunday for a job well done.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Quick. I want to say thank you to the fellow people I have been around in the Transportation Department in my part-time venture as I retire at the end of the school year from driving. I will miss my special-needs kids immensely. They have been a great new educator for me. And it's hard to say, when you get older, that you can be reeducated and reeducated and reeducated, but you can. And it's a phenomenal thing. I will miss them greatly. I will miss the individual teachers-- I will miss the individual teachers, the individual parents, mom and dad. I'll miss them all. I can't even tell you what that feeling is. It's been one of those things where you write that chapter in your life and you say, wow, that's been a great four or five years. And so, and I want to say thanks to all the transportation people I have worked around and with, and I could name a billion of them, it seems like. They're just there every day. It's hard to imagine you're up at 4:30 in the morning and out there running rain, snow, sleet, whatever it is, like the postman. Cold bus, warm bus, COVID bus, you name it. Masks, shields, boots, cold wind, warm wind, you name it. But again, I'll miss those special needs kids. I can't tell you how profound that is. It really is very special. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Levin, anything tonight?
I will echo what everybody else said about congratulating the seniors and all the students being recognized at all the various honors nights and programs and last band and orchestra concerts and choir concerts and all of that. But I also want to say congratulations to the students and the parents who simply made it through the year. For some, that in itself is an accomplishment, and you too should be proud. So congratulations.
Anything, Mrs. Kaplan?
Yes, I'll be quick. I just want to say, as everybody, congratulations to everybody who's graduating. That includes our transitions tomorrow, our adult transition program tomorrow morning. I'm very, you know, thankful to all of our staff and teachers to make it through the year. Thank you for everything that you've done for our kids and our families, and hope you all have a fantastic and wonderful summer.
And the only other thing I will say to end board commentary is check out our website, check out our social media feeds. I have attended one community conversation. I'm hoping to get to your other two that are coming up in June, but they're a good method for people to ask you questions and for you to give updates. So there's a couple more coming up in June.
There might even be popsicles at one of them.
Oh, popsicles. That's probably going to be at Henry Ford in the kitchen, right? No, okay, I'm wrong. All right, on we go. We have the consent agenda. We have an approval of minutes. We have two meetings from April 27, 2023. We have two meetings from May 4, 2023, and then a final meeting on May 11, 2023. Again, these are all meeting minutes. We have personnel recommendations, new hires, retirements, resignation, and nonrenewal. We have financial reports. We have disbursements in the amount of $17,718,873. And we also have a Head Start Director's Report. Can I have a motion?
Mrs. Casagrande.
Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We're now going to move on to purchases. We have a social studies purchase. Dr. Bernia?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kohansky.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bernia. We have on the agenda tonight a social studies grades two through three textbook and online resources. My World Interactive Savvas Learning 2019 Edition in the amount of $190,220.25 to come out of the general fund.
Mrs. Kaplan?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of social studies grades two through three textbooks and online resources from My World Interactive Savvas Learning 2019 for $190,220.25 from the general fund.
Any discussion? Mrs. Levin?
So I reviewed this curriculum and also reviewed the teaching guides, and I think that the curriculum is fine for, you know, for what it is. There was nothing, you know, overly remarkable one way or another about it. But I was very concerned about the teaching guide even having a mention of gender and sexuality for seven and eight-year-olds. And I cannot in good conscience support giving almost $200,000 to a publisher who thinks that that's appropriate for children who are seven and eight years old. I don't question the content of the curriculum, but I do question the content of the teaching guide.
Any other comments? Mrs. Fernandez?
I, for this and for the books that I commented on previously, have similar concerns largely lying in the instructional guides. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with new teaching techniques and inquiry-based learning, but some of the things that have appeared in the instructional guides for teachers specifically indicate that they should not correct children who are working from knowledge that, you know, that is just factually wrong, and this for very young children groups. So, you know, in case some of my objections to the criteria last month were not clear, you know, it's not that we would use and teach by inquiry. That's obviously a great method, but the guides push that to an extreme that seems unreasonable for young children in that and other areas. So I also have still a problem with it. I do want to thank the likes of Ms. Lacrosse, Ms. McDonald, Mr. Malonis, Ms. Abraham for pointing out that great teachers are coming up with great methods and keeping up with challenging kids in very different ways, no matter what materials that they're working from. And so it just seems to me that, you know, we have great educators that are doing that, and we ought to be able to find materials that don't have some of those controversial things because the newer and younger educators are quite likely to pay a lot of credence to them. So I have those concerns still.
Mrs. Kaplan?
I want to say thank you to the Curriculum Committee for taking all the time and energy to go through our books and to recommend what they've recommended for us. And I have to say that I need to, that I put trust in all of our teachers in the district. And if there's something in a book that they're teaching from, I trust that they're going to make the appropriate decisions on how they're going to teach their curriculum.
Any other comments? Ms. Tice?
So I, too, reviewed the textbooks last month, and I would basically echo what Mrs. Levin has already said. I didn't find anything questionable in the content of the curriculum itself. However, I can't in good conscience approve something that, you know, is encouraging the teachers to promote this transgender ideology. I think that, you know, it was already stated tonight about how parents can inform students at home of their beliefs and what they wish, and I think this is a subject, if parents want to teach that to their children at home, they're more than welcome and free to do that. But I don't think that that's something that we should be pushing in our classrooms.
Any other comments?
I have one last comment. I did talk with Dr. Bernia about this because I know that we do have a very robust process, and I had talked with a couple of board members who wanted to talk about this. And for me, it's the professionalism of our students, and it's the professionalism of our staff. And somebody here today said the world is changing. The world is changing. And when there is something in a guide, again, we have protocols that help our teachers, and we continue to learn from each other. And I am in full support of this material and the process that we go through to review it. So thank you, Mrs. Kohansky and your team, for everything you do. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four three. And next we have the Advanced Placement Government Textbook. Dr. Bernia?
Right back to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. On the agenda for you tonight is the Advanced Placement Government High School textbook entitled Presidential Election Update: American Government Stories of a Nation for the AP Course Bedford-Freeman &amp; Worth 2021 in the amount of $23,874.95 to come out of the general fund.
Mr. Siegler?
Mrs. Casagrande, I move that the Board approve the purchase of the Advanced Placement Government High School textbook entitled Presidential Election Update: American Government Stories of a Nation for the AP Course Bedford &amp; Freeman &amp; Worth 2021 for $23,874.95 from the general fund.
Any discussion? Mrs. Fernandez?
Yeah, so I just want to mention a couple of things here. Not surprising that I have, that I have a similar viewpoint. What I'd like to just submit for consideration is, having just run an election here recently, we know that our community is 30% strong leaning in one direction, 30% in the other, and 40% wholly in the middle. So there are a lot of mixed feelings and polarized views on a lot of things, and something like an AP government book, you know, is bound to hit triggers. When we hear communities that in one meeting, you know, are speaking, you know, with certainty that this is terribly right-sided, and with the other meeting are saying it's terribly left-sided, and when the perspectives can be that polarized, it just seems to me that that's a strong indication that we really need to do more work to come to the table and figure out what is something that really is a little bit more close to or less incendiary for anyone's point of view. So I also want to say we have, you know, along with any of our book purchases and things, we do approve and have approved recently and probably every year a whole vast number of resources in Safari and other types of subscriptions. So I know there was some concerns voiced, you know, about having materials and turning down materials that didn't offer a lot of variety for teachers and educators, but I thought I would point that out as well.
Any other comments? Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Casagrande. I would just like to say, I think from having spent time with most everyone on the Board here over the last few weeks on some of these different subjects related in this area, I do believe, and I would like to make the suggestion to Dr. Bernia, that we have a pretty robust workshop secondary schedule for the Board this summer. But I would like to see if we could get an overall better understanding, because I, for one, am not the most knowledgeable when it comes to how we get to a book at some point being reviewed somewhere. So I would love to know and understand clearly how it starts at the top and how it rolls down to the bottom. I think it will help us all in trying to understand that process and all the various nuances. So irregardless of the books and what your commentary thoughts are, either way, I just think the Board could use that as a secondary workshop agenda to better understand both the legal, anything in the state, and again, how the state operates, how they get them, how we get it down to the district level, so on and so forth. I just think it would be a worthy value. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mrs. Levin?
Thank you, Mrs. Casagrande. So I had raised some concerns about this AP Government textbook, and one of the resources that was shared with the Board was the publisher's guide or response to the concerns. And the summary of my understanding of that response was it made people angry on both sides, so it was okay. And I believe that something, you know, like government is a factual representation. It doesn't need to incite emotion on both sides. The point of the class is to, you know, create or help cultivate a student's ability to form their own opinions. And I think that when the book has opinions strongly on both sides, that is in itself helping the student form their own opinions rather than presenting fact-based materials and historical accounts of what happened, whether it was good or bad from whatever perspective. And I think that this particular textbook is so dramatically offensive to either side that there needs to be a happier medium. And from what I understand, AP maybe has a bigger list of books than what was narrowed down to the initial, or the last three that were narrowed down to this one. And I would love to understand, you know, is there a different book? And really, what are the guidelines that the committee is using? And maybe that needs to be reviewed so that we don't end up having teachers spending all this time and then potentially have to go back to the drawing board. And, you know, we need to, I think, maybe look together at what is it that we're starting from, similar to Mr. Peterson's comment, but a little different, and what are the criteria that are being used by these committees to get to where we are at the end so that maybe we can avoid the time and the energy that doesn't necessarily align with what maybe the Board agrees the curriculum criteria should be.
Any other comments?
I will just say, speaking from not only a board member but also as a parent of a student who, I'm not even going to tell you how many years ago, took AP Government and did use the text at the time, and was very helpful in helping him to take that AP test and to pass that and to achieve college credit. There is a very, in talking to Dr. Bernia, an understanding, there is a very strict protocol with AP courses. And for us to maintain our ability to offer those AP courses, there is a second and third order of fact in looking at this particular book. And again, I trust Dr. Bernia and his staff, and I thank the community members who spoke about it, but I am in support of this. I'm going to take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four three. We are now going to move on to the 2022-2023 Budget Amendment. Dr. Bernia?
I'm going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Les.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The administration has evaluated the budget line items, and adjustments have been made to more accurately reflect the 2022-2023 revenue and expenditures.
Mrs. Levin?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to amend the 2022-23 budgets as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And move on to the 2023-24 Millage Rates. Dr. Bernia?
Back to Mrs. Les.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Based on the provisions of Proposal A and the change in the Michigan Business Tax in 2011-2012, the millage rates required to generate the homestead and non-homestead millage rates for 2023-2024 will be 16.7461 mils on all non-homestead properties, zero mils on homestead properties, and 4.7461 mils on homestead commercial properties to satisfy the debt obligations for 2023-24. 4.13 mils will be levied on all properties and .5 mils on all properties for the sinking fund.
Who's brave enough to read that motion? Mrs. Levin?
I usually do it.
I move that the Board of Education approve a general fund millage rate of zero mils on principal residents, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, and industrial personal, 4.7461 mils on commercial personal, and 16.7461 mils for all other, and further approve a debt retirement rate of 4.13 mils for all properties and sinking fund rate of 0.5 mils on all properties for 2023-24.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we have the ratification of a Wild Lake Education Association, WLEA, contract. Dr. Bernia?
Mr. Russo?
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Administration is proud to present this two-year ratified agreement with the Wild Lake Education Association. This contract provides a significant investment in our teachers and places our district in a very favorable position as we continue to navigate labor shortages while still being able to provide high-quality experiences for students and parents. What follows are highlights from this tentative agreement. This is a two-year agreement beginning August 12, 2023, and going through August 15, 2025. There is an increase of the instructional day at the high schools by three minutes. This agreement creates a conference structure at the middle and elementary levels which allows for both in-person and virtual options for parents while the high school remains virtual. This also provides three additional years of calendars, starting with the 24-25 school year and goes through the 26-27 school year. Some salary adjustments are as follows. In Year One, teachers who are on the top step receive a 7% on-schedule increase with a 1,200 off-schedule lump sum for those at the top step. Full steps for all members who are in steps, and removal of half-steps on the 13-step schedule. In Year Two, there's a removal of the 15-step salary schedule. All members move to the same step on the 13-step schedule. So all members will move to a 13-step schedule. There's a 2,700 off-schedule lump sum for those at the top step, and members who are in steps who are already sum for those at the top step, and members who are in steps, who are already on the 13-step schedule, receive two steps.
Mrs. Kaplan?
I move that the Board of Education approve the ratified agreement between the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education and the Wald Lake Education Association as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Mrs. Kaplan?
I just want to say thank you to both sides for the time and energy that you've taken to get this contract to us. And I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Mr. Siegler?
Again, as echoing what Mrs. Kaplan said, thank you to everybody involved on both sides of this. For us to be able to have a two-year contract after all of the years of going from one year to one year is absolutely remarkable. To be able to finally bring teachers to what somewhat being more whole than they were in the past, after being concessionary for so many years, is a tribute to our administration and our staff for working on this. And the fact that we are able to come out with a calendar so that everybody can plan for the future also is just, in my mind, I think it will help the community and the parents overall. So thank you to everybody involved.
Any other comments? I, I guess I want to address the elephant in the room. I want to thank the legislature for giving us additional money so we could actually go through and negotiate and have additional money going back to our first goal. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Very happily seven zero. Next, we have our Head Start Self-Assessment Procedure. Dr. Bernia?
We're going to turn it over to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The Improving Head Start for School Readiness Act 2007 and the Head Start Program Performance Standards 1302.102 articulate regulatory requirements regarding the self-assessment of Head Start and early Head Start programs. Self-assessment is an annual comprehensive big-picture assessment that evaluates the context and achievement of the program, the effectiveness and progress in meeting program goals and objectives, and the implementation and compliance with regulatory requirements, with a focus on health and safety in school readiness. The process for the 2023 self-assessment consists of a collaboration of all Head Start programs in which focus groups collect, analyze, and assess findings of data and feedback related to health and safety in school readiness. The proposed Head Start Self-Assessment Procedure for 2023 was approved by the Wald Lake Consolidated Schools Head Start Policy Committee on May 10th, 2023. To comply with all federal contract regulations, Wald Lake Schools Head Start is submitting the 2023 Head Start Self-Assessment Procedure for Board approval.
Ooh, I'm going to let Ms. Tice do it.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Wald Lake 2023 Head Start Self-Assessment Procedure as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we have the Resolution for Stormwater Management Plan. Dr. Bernia?
We're going to go to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Since 2009, Wald Lake Consolidated Schools has implemented stormwater management measures in accordance with requirements of the Clean Water Act of 1987, and has been issued a permit from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, also known as Eagle, to discharge water through the district stormwater system to waters of the state of Michigan. Following a recent review of our program by Eagle officials, they are requiring Board of Education approval of a stormwater resolution to retain authorization to continue this practice through the, a permit that they issued to us. And we have a resolution for your consideration.
Mrs. Casagrande.
Mr. Siegler?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution in support of the Stormwater Management Plan as presented.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mrs. Casagrande.
Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Chatfield, please can you explain why you think Eagle would have required that this time, that Board approval?
They, they required it initially upon initial permit. They require it every five years. It's, it's what they consider their regulatory ordinance that will ensure that the Wald Lake Schools commits to following proper stormwater management plans and procedures, limiting runoffs from construction sites, things of that nature. It's, it's one of the reasons why frankly, school car wash events have been minimized to a great degree.
So, so is this re-renewed every five years?
Yes.
Is that what it is? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Fernandez, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can approve this without having to read it out loud.
Oh, the resolution? I believe we can because we've received it.
Awesome.
Thank you. Yep. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And next, we have a waiver request. Dr. Bernia?
Right back to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The Commerce Chargers and Wald Lake Braves Youth Football and Cheer Programs have been direct feeder programs to Wald Lake Central High School and Wald Lake Western High School for many years. They are nonprofit organizations comprised of football teams and cheer squads based in Commerce Township. They are truly a community program. As league rules dictate, the students on these teams must live in our school boundary area. These programs work closely with our high school coaches in the respective sports to better prepare student athletes for when they arrive in, in high school. About 95% of our eighth graders that are part of the Chargers and Braves go on to participate at the high school level. Over 60% of the district athletes that participate in Wald Lake High School Football and Cheer Programs began by participating in the Chargers and Braves community programs. Recently, the district had to discontinue the middle school tackle football program, leaving the district without a middle school youth football feeder program. And it, administration recommends that in accordance with Board Policy 7002-AR fee schedule for school facilities, the district reduced the athletic field rental rates as requested by these two groups by 50% to ensure the continued strength of these community programs.
Mrs. Levin?
I move that the Board of Education approve a 50% reduction in the athletic field rental fees for the 2023-2024 school year for the Wald Lake Braves and Commerce Youth Football and Cheer Programs in accordance with Board Policy 7002-AR fee schedule, school facilities.
Any discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Do we have a pending AR rec that's going to reduce some of the pay-to-play that has not been announced? Is that correct or no?
Yeah, we're, we're finalizing the details. We're finalizing the details on our proposal. But, but as a preview to everyone, when we come to our meeting on June the 15th, that's still part of the budget process and still part of everything that we're rolling out. But the Board can expect an update on that, that I believe, based on my conversations and feedback from all seven of you, that you will be pleased with. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Now, we have a resolution for the Michigan High School Association, MHSAA, membership. Dr. Bernia?
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lons.
Thank you, sir. The Board of Education hereby delegates the superintendent or his designated responsibility for the supervision and control of the district's secondary athletic activities and hereby accepts the constitution and bylaws of the Michigan Association, excuse me, Michigan High School Association. The district adopts its own rules, regulations, and interpretations as minimum standards, as published in the current Athletic Handbook, as the governing code under which Wald Lake Secondary Schools shall conduct its program of interstitial athletics, and agrees to primary enforcement of said rules, regulations, interpretations, and qualifications. In addition, it is hereby agreed that schools that host or participate in the association's meets and tournaments shall follow and enforce all tournament policies, procedures, and schedules. This author, authorization shall be effective from August 1st, 2023, and shall remain effective until July 31st, 2024, during which authorization may not be revoked.
Mrs. Kaplan?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Is it okay if I keep this one and don't pass it off to you? Okay. Board policy... So see, it's faster, more efficient. Board policy adoption. So prior, just prior to the meeting, we had just a, a little bit of individual discussion. We have a lot of work that we feel we still need to do. We have, you know, new, new board members. We have just things that we still have questions about. And, and so we feel that it's best if instead of going over some of the policy information that's going to come today, if we postpone this to a future meeting and everybody was in agreement with that, we're going to officially vote though. So I'm going to bring a different motion that was originally on the agenda with the same topic. So I move to postpone consideration of this motion regarding Board Policy Adoption to a future meeting date to be determined. Any discussion further than what I have brought forward? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And I know that Ms. Silva will keep us honest and we'll bring that back when we're ready to do so. And next, we have the Oakland County School Boards Association, OCSPA Awards Event. I, before I read the motion, for attendance so far, I have me, Mr. Siegler, and Mrs. Levin. Is there anybody else who's going to attend? Well, I don't think I need to approve you, though. Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the attendance of Mrs. Casagrande, Mr. Siegler, and Mrs. Levin at the Oakland County School Boards Association Awards Event on Wednesday, June 21, 2023, and authorize payment of the registration fee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, and we are adjourned at 10:18. Thank you for all of you who stayed for the whole meeting.